Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Test, test, one, two, one, two, three.
Call of meeting back. I'd call the meeting back to order. Madam Secretary, do we have any action as necessary or appropriate regarding matters discussed in executive session?
Yes, Chairman, we have two more motions coming out of executive session. I move that the board authorize the superintendent to issue an award to McMillan Pazdin Smith of Charleston, South Carolina, and Mosley Architects also of Charleston, South Carolina for renovation and modification projects. The board authorizes the superintendent to negotiate the architectural contracts and upon successful negotiations execute a contract with each firm.
Second, any discussion? Mr. Smith?
In terms of these contracts, I just, of hiring a, of hiring a, a, excuse me, not this one. I got it wrong, don't worry about it.
You have nothing else? Okay, sir, all right. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in the room, favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand, aye. And motion carries and room and Dr. Carr, are you up?
Yes, aye.
Dr. Carr, you're muted.
No, I'm, no, I'm not.
You said aye, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I could, I could hear everything, I said aye.
Nothing heard, motion carries.
Dr. Carr said aye verbally and I said aye for aye.
I'm muted, but you can't hear them.
Are they trying to vote?
Yes.
Ms. Hay or, or Dr. Carr, if you could put in chat, I see Ms. Hay just said aye, all right. Dr. Carr? Dr. Carr, aye, all right, motion carries unanimously with three absences. All right, next item.
Our second motion is I move that the Board of Education approve Amendment Number Five with Turner and Townsend hearing, which authorizes a not-to-exceed limit for the 2026 staffing plan.
Have a second? Second by Pastor Gordon, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor in the room, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand, aye, aye. And, Ms., Dr. Carr?
He said aye and Elizabeth Hay said aye.
Aye, any opposed? Mr. Smith, okay, motion carries. I believe that completes.
That completes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That is all the motions out of executive committee.
All right, and you have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we present the agenda as presented.
Second, second by Mr. Nae, any discussion, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, I would like to pull off the, the funerals in schools because I was not, I'm not prepared, I was not told about this, would like to be told about it when it's be, let me put on the agenda, the funerals in school, that's my topic to a further, to a further agenda. would like to be told about it, when it's be, let me put on the agenda, the funerals in school, that's my topic, uh, to a, for a further, um, to a further agenda.
That would require a vote, because it's not on the consent agenda, so you can't pull an agenda item without a majority vote.
Okay, do I have, do you have to make a motion in, sir?
No problem, I'll make a motion that, that we, uh, we actually, if the, if we have not, if we have not voted on the, uh, if we have not voted on it, then I, I believe it can be pulled, uh,
It's FOIA, because it's been published that it's going to be on the agenda, so you're changing agenda items, so that requires a vote.
I just remember us pulling, pulling things in the past, but no, no, no problem, we have to go back and forth, but this time I'll make a motion that we, that we pull the topic of funerals in schools off the agenda.
Any second? Have a second, sent by Pastor Gordon, uh, any discussion? Okay.
As, as I, as I stated that, I didn't know, I was not aware that we were going to, uh, discuss this today, so I'm not prepared, there's some other things that I need to, uh, bring with, bring up with this topic, and I'm not prepared to bring those things forward today. I hope, I hope, uh, when we bring this topic up again, I can be notified about it, because we've changed our startup agenda, uh, agenda setting.
For, for the record, it, it has been, was posted in the, uh, in diligent at least twenty-four hours in advance that we had it, but I, I understand your comment.
Right, in twenty, 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 in twenty-four hours in advance, this, if, if I, if I'm talking to other people, getting, uh, expertise, information that relates to this topic does not give them the, the time of scheduling their time to be here to address this, this is something that the community have concerns of as well.
Okay.
Respectfully, thank you.
So, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That's Mr. Nay, myself. Okay, and, uh, online, anybody, aye, aye, Ms. Hay and Dr. Carr, aye. And those against?
Against taking it off the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm against taking it off the agenda.
Two, and Epstein? And against, all right, all right, the, the motion carries, and Mr. Smith, we will put it on the agenda for the, uh, December meeting, the first meeting in December, it will be, though that.
What was the final motion on the votes?
There is three no, three no, the rest.
How many, four?
One, two, three, four, five. I have five in favor.
Of removing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, going on with the motion to approve the agenda, all those in favor in the room, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Online?
Aye.
Dr. Carr, Ms. Hay? Ms. Hay is an aye? Dr. Carr? That's, Dr. Carr is an aye, motion carries unanimously, all right. Now, if you would please rise for a moment of silence, and for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And a moment of silence for Coach Joe Strowman, a legendary figure at Battery Creek High School, passed away in November twenty twenty-five. He was inducted into the Battery Creek High School Hall of Fame in two, twenty fifteen, and the South Carolina Coaches Association Hall of Fame in July twenty twenty-five. The school and community are mourning his loss and celebrating his legacy as a coach and a mentor. Thank you. As the media have been notified, ma'am.
I'm sorry, which is?
Is the media been notified?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Social, those are extensions.
Next item on the agenda is public comments, we have one public comment. I miss Gwendolyn McClennan, and her topic is professionalism. Ma'am, if you would come up to the speaker.
But she was online.
So David, David are online, yes, and they voted, yes, they voted.
So I'm saying we're missing a vote.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Someone didn't vote.
Good morning.
I, I don't think they make, mic is turned on.
Good morning, I'm an artist, so I should know how to check a microphone. I just wanted to, as a community member, again, my name is Gwendolyn McKinnon. As a community member, I just wanted to express that, um, I realize you guys have a real hard job, um, making decisions for our youth in our community, and I recognize that we're not all going to have the same opinions. And it's important to be able to express how you feel, bring the, you know, your perspective, or what's in the best interest of the kids. And so, I wanted to take the opportunity to tell you thank you for what you do, as well as express my disdain for the incident that happened, um, live in the microphone, where you, Mr. Chairman, uh, made a very derogatory comment in reference to Mrs. Smith. Everybody has to, has a job to do here, and however you may feel personally, should not come into this space. Whatever issues you may have with a person's personality, there's going to be differences. We're all in this world together, and we don't all think the same, we don't all feel the same, so we have to conduct ourselves in a professional manner at all times in this setting. Would you all agree? You disagree? That was a question, you could just nod your head or something. Do you agree that you guys should be professional in this setting?
Ma'am, I would just add, they can't comment.
They can't comment, they can't shake their heads or anything.
No, ma'am, that's.
Okay, no, no problem, all right, I did get some nods anyway. But, um, that was all I wanted to say in, in this time, was that let's please maintain decorum and be professional, and not make any person feel disrespected in this setting. Because Will fights for our community, he fights for our kids, he shows up in it, everything that they have going on, uh, he's always there. When I'm not there as much, and when I get the opportunity to pull up, Will's there already, so he shouldn't have to come into this setting to fight for our kids and feel disrespected by any person. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is coherent governance. Board governance and evaluating internal board processes, that was part of, uh, future agenda topic. And it just so happened that, uh, our vice chair went to a coherent governance conference, and he's going to brief us on what he learned, and we'll have a discussion about our internal, uh, way that we are executing our government, uh, model. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, Board, for the opportunity to discuss this particular topic. I did attend the coherent governance, uh, conference, put on by, uh, the AGI Institute, who are the acquirers and owners of the coherent governance, um, trademark and, and, and the process. Very informative, I learned a lot, our, we had several school districts there from across the nation. From, if I recall correctly, from as far away as, uh, the West Coast, uh, the Upper Midwest, um, South Carolina as well. I happened to sit at a table, uh, with a, uh, school district from South Carolina, Ori County, which is also an, a practitioner of coherent governance, and they've been doing it for some years. They had five of their eleven board members there, so some very robust conversations, um, about how they could improve, even though they've been executing it for some time, and their superintendent was there. So you had the superintendent as well as a minority of the school board, and so people could speak freely, and they did. So what I'm going to share with you is basically a recap of what coherent governance is, how it should be executed, and then I've taken the liberty to actually propose about six or seven different items that looking at our board and the good things that this board has done in turn, in this school district in terms of professional development, that one of the things, one of the promote, well, the ideas will be, how do we move forward in terms of professional development days for our board? And so we'll be able to talk about that in terms of interfaces and what have you. So if you go to the next page, please, you'll see it says, what is it? It's a policy-driven governance system, we already have policies in place. One of the key things, and we've been executing this since nineteen, not nineteen, twenty twenty-one, when it was first adopted by the school district, and since that time, we've been, we've been utilizing it. However, the opportunity is whether or not we can execute it even with more fidelity against how it is supposed to be handled. And so the main thing is it separates governance from operations. When I've talked, spoken to school districts from other places in South Carolina, through the school, South Carolina School Board Association, one of the things that tends to happen is that it's very difficult, we've been elected by people in our district, we come to the board, we expect to make a difference, and there's a system that says we want to respect the delineation between the role of the superintendent and the role of the board. And coming in, one of the things I've learned is that that is something I need to respect, because it has, it can be very confusing to the staff of the superintendent, and could actually create some inertia in terms of speed of execution, identifying what the issues are. So that's one of the main things about coherent governance, and the second thing, it focuses the board on results and accountability. And I have to applaud the results committee of our board for the discussion that they had relative to results for the superintendent, because that actually moved us further along the path of how do we make sure we delegate to the superintendent those things that are needed from a board's perspective without infringing on the superintendent's ability to develop strategy, tactics, and operational guidelines. So that is one of the things that I think we did, and that was very good to see. So if you'll go to the next page, why governance is, reform is needed, sometimes there can be role ambiguity, not intentionally. That was what I heard from all of the other districts that were there, well intentioned, going out and say, if I go to a school and I suggest something to that principal, and I've, and suggested in a way that that principal interprets that that's a command, that can create role ambiguity, because the superintendent's going to have to come back and go over that, and say, okay, is this what I want to do? And so one of the things that was, I mean, just repeatedly stated by participants as well as the presenters was we need to make sure as a board we're communicating to the superintendent, and that eliminates the ambiguity and the micromanagement tendencies, because a board is designed to be very high-level and strategic, and looking far down the road. And I always pose this question, in the seventeen hundreds, when public school system was first created, why were they created? They were not created to build recreation centers, they were not created to do a lot of the things that we do now out of necessity. They were created to, to basically educate the population, which was not well-educated. And so when you talk about why was it created, that is it, and we want to make sure that we're sticking close, because when you look at what the school, state of South Carolina judges us on, anybody remember what the two numerical items are that we're judged on? Math scores and ELA scores. So you create it, and the legislature has said this is what's important, everything else is a support mechanism to that. So we just want to make sure we're giving our leadership administration as much latitude to come up with strategies that they buy in and their team buy into, so that they own it and they move forward with it. And so that is one of the things, and you see an inconsistent decision framework, just execute with fidelity, our role is leaders. If you move forward, this first one says ends policies, don't interpret that as that coherent governance says no policies, exact opposite. There will be policies, but what it says is policies should be in reinforcing what the end result is strategically, high level, and the superintendent decides how he's going, he and his team or her team is going to move it forward. And it talks about monitoring versus assumptions, so a lot of rigorous analysis need to be put together. From what I've seen in the time I've been here, we get that type of analysis in terms of recommendations and a strategy. Last year, I thought the way the strategy, uh, culling took place was very effective, because superintendent and staff came back with here's the plan of how we're going to actually execute, how we're going to achieve what you're asking us to do, and that type of latitude tends to be fertile grounds for more positive motivation. So that is something that, um, was also stressed. The last item on this particular slide is board unity versus fragmented governance. One of the things that was absolutely discussed with some ginger-ness about making sure we're not making anyone feel indicted in that session up there is that don't take votes personal. You know, each of us will have different opinions, we come with different backgrounds in terms of research, and so what we end up having is each of us may come in with a different perspective. All of that in this session gets melded together by the majority vote, we just had one. So everyone got a chance to raise their hand, yea or nay, and then collectively, once the majority was identified, we move forward and we drop it. There's no animosity about how a person voted, we're just trying to learn and bring the best, so. Those were the things that actually, it was a two-and-a-half-day conference, very informative. A lot of informal conversations took place where I learned a lot and realized we've done well, but I think we can do better. And so with that, uh, if you'll go to the next page, and this is the one where there's two slides are board direction. Yes, there you go, okay. So really, it boils down to two things, two responsibilities, clusters of responsibilities. One is the board sets direction, informed direction, that's our role. We vote on it, we assign it to the superintendent, and then the superintendent comes up with policy, with, uh, tactics, with strategies, with execution plans, with investment needed to support it, personnel decisions needed to support achievement, and that is what that person gets judged on. And we actually are beginning to do that more, again, going back to the results committee, because that was very important, that we went to a new, more numerical set of metrics as opposed to so strongly project managed oriented. Now, the thing that came up is if you do, if the board does really uh, precise delegations, that delegation, that person who is executing may achieve that, but does it move the organization towards the? but does it move the organization towards the larger end results, which is educating our kids? And so that correlation needs to be very clear. So as you go through what we're going to be talking about very briefly for the next few minutes, please remember board sets direction under the coherent governance model. Superintendent takes it, sets up plans, strategies, comes back, board says yes, and we move forward. And then we judge and monitor, which is really critically important over the course of the year, and then do the year in review. If you'll go, okay, thank you. You're already there. The delegation structures, we delegate, the board decides and delegates to the superintendent. And then the superintendent, he or she takes control and they delegate in a portion to their staff as they see fit. They may need to increase staff in certain areas. They may need to decrease staff in certain areas and move human talent where it's most needed. That is their decision. And so what we want to make sure happens is that in the course of that, it's moving us towards improving the scores for our students, which is what the state is requiring of us. If you'll move to the next one, you'll see what is the policy architecture. And one of the things I think we have been, been doing pretty, pretty doggone well are operational expectations. We review those on a real regular basis. And that's what the board will be using. That's board purview. That's what they use to actually control the parameters in terms of ethics, in terms of what you do or don't, what have you, those types of things. And then the results, results, empirical results of how we're moving things forward. And that is the governance process for coherent governance. So it's a very good process. And we're going to talk about as board members, how do we sort of facilitate this? Okay. Now, if you go to the next chart. All of you know, I'm not a technophile. I'm not technologically oriented, but I did use A I because some of my colleagues are really beginning to use A I. And so I made an effort. This chart is not valid. It is not even close to being statistically valid. Which means it gave us a visual, but in terms of relying on it to tell a message is just here to show I made an effort and it didn't work. It's here so you see it, but let me tell you what came about as a result of that. Through our network, we were able to actually contact State Department of, South Carolina Department of Education and the, one of the key leaders in the office of this superintendent of South Carolina. The one that I spoke to has a PhD in MIT, from MIT in statistical analysis. I was fortunate enough to serve on a bank board sitting next to her. And this is something that she feels may have some real impact, not only statewide, but also nationally. To actually establish some correlations, if possible, between type of governance, turnover, school scores, if there's that connection. So that potential is getting elevated quite high just because, not you, but I stumbled in the dark with this chart, but we did ask for help. And so if you go to the next slide, you'll see what attracts CEOs to coherent governance. Basically, CEOs like latitude to use their ingenuity and ideas about how to deliver. CEOs tend to, as most of us, not most of, all of us sitting in this room, we want to succeed. We want to be positively adding value to whatever organization we are a part of. And so with that, they want to provide, perform the job with creativity, increase professional pride, authority, accountability, uh, align system to achieve results, to get back to results over and over again. True framework for site management. As you go down the hierarchy, you'll see that if you're not out visiting and engaging people who are two, three, four, five levels down from where you sit, it is very difficult to project your empathy, your passion and support for those people who are your frontline employees, teachers, principals, all those professionals that help educate our students, vitally important. And then we are, we also, CEOs want, not we, CEOs want to professionally interact with the board and mutual support. Because board has allocate resources and make sure we are saying what can and cannot be done based on the request. Now, what attracts boards to C G? The board isn't able to exercise leadership at a policy level. And the difference between operational performance and policy is you have to step back and have some time to really think about what's going on. What are the impediments to us achieving our targets? Is it we don't have enough staff or are we not paying enough? Are we not recruiting in the right places? Are we not, as this lady, uh, not this lady, but some of the feedback we've gotten is we need to be out there, we need to be communicating more. That rightfully should come from a board member as feedback from the people who basically rule us, which are the citizens through the vote. So our being able to feed that information back is vitally, vitally important. Uh, we also talk about, we talked about improving trusteeship, which is not really operational, it's more higher, higher, higher level guidance. And that becomes very important. Uh, we talked about providing fiscal support through the budgeting process approving that and own division outcomes or benefits. So we want to make sure we have very, very much appreciated reward systems. So what types of reward system? Is it saying hello and thank you to our colleagues who are more frontline than we are? Those types of things and clarity of roles. So that was deep discussions, heartfelt. Some people who have been on boards for twenty, twenty-five years really talked about the days when they had a more direct operational system and they went to coherent governance and it made it easier on both parties. We did have one superintendent and, no, two superintendents in the mix. And it was very good to hear what their perspective was about what motivates them to, of course, they're committed to doing the job, but what motivates them even more? So if you go to and look at the one here, uh, this is another where I tried to make an edit, but I made an error. You'll see I duplicated three and eight. So those are the same. So just take that one eight out because it says the same as three. But they're color coded for the impact. So if you see those first four up top, they're your heaviest hitters. We're accountable to the district owners, the citizens. Board, not individual members, govern the district by majority vote. Most important responsibility, define the desired results for the students and require their achievement, defines its expectations and delegate their execution. So that's the top level of what we expect the board and the C G to do. And again, I think we've been doing that, but you'll see what the recommendations are following. The board governs by policy under number four, not necessarily by approvals or resolutions or random directives. So it needs to again, come before the board with research. We studied, we understand it. Uh, we make sure we have time, as this board alluded a few minutes ago, to review those various topics and then come back with a vote. The next thing you'll see empowers the superintendent on number nine. And number five, express policy and broad, broadest values and concerns before deciding smaller, less impactful items. And then the performance on the ten, the performance of the district and the, uh, and the performance of the superintendent are identical. If the superintendent is not successful, we're not successful. If the superintendent is successful, then we are successful in it because it will result in the numerical values. So as we go through, yes, the next one. I think this is one of the most important slides in the whole deck. Because I think visually, this shows you, you see those four icons up top? Those are citizens. They elect us. If they don't elect us, we're not sitting here. So we have to be responsible for them. But then you see where it goes down and you see the gavel because that's where the decisions are made. Uh, coherent governance policies. And then you see the two, the little gray inner box, how it stretches out and then it goes down. And if you look at the absolute bottom, you'll see that little green where it says O E policies. That's operations and we help identify what was wanted there through O, O E expectations, right? But on the other side, you'll see where superintendent also will be responsible for results. So that there's that combination of policy and results. Policies may say, we have an ethic, a policy on ethics. So that's as important as results, those types of things. In the middle, you see the arrow pointing to the red superintendent icon. And the B S R stands for board and superintendent relations. So that is something that we should be ensuring that we maintain on a very sound basis, open basis, what have you. And then moving forward, I solicited some of the other participants as to what did they encounter upon first utilization of coherent governance? And then what would they recommend? So what you have here are the items that would recommend. Next slide, yes, please, sorry. So you see, number one is self-assessment. Now, the administrative group, they have their feedback mechanisms. And they are conducted in a way, so there's broad feedback, but I can't have, I can't identify who said it. And so it becomes, it's less of an indictment of the person because if you have fifteen people responding about me and I see one item said by eight or nine of them, that means that's what I'm projecting. And or at least that's how people are interpreting it. And we want to ensure that we are managing how we project. That's a huge part of leadership. To ensure we are communicating in an effective manner. So three sixty feedback is what, you know, is part of the recommendation for the board so that all of us can get feedback on how we handle ourselves, how people receive our efforts, good, bad, or indifferent. And it's not where Carlton is talking about microphone and saying things like that in a very personal way. Try to be as analytical and objective as possible. We also will need coaching on coherent governance. Now, I've been on the board three years and until the chair asked us about a retreat, I don't remember, now it could have happened before my tenure. But in my tenure, I don't remember another request for us to sit down like the towns do and the county do and have a retreat where they actually talk about things. And it's open to the public, so the public is a part of it. And that retreat and coaching and instruction on coherent governance should include team building retreats, uh, exercises. If I may share, one of the most insightful training sessions I have ever been in was, and this was like twenty-five years ago, when we were asked, what about you people don't know that you believe they would be surprised about? And stop and think about that. And I'll share you what mine was because no one could believe it. The question was, again, Carlton, what about you would no one believe and they just don't think of it? The answer was, my response was, I actually flew a plane when I was in R O T C, Air Force R O T C. And we were going down to Eglin Air Force Base, not at, uh, the naval station down in, uh, outside of Pensacola, we're getting practice on an F four simulator. And so going down, we were going in a T thirty-eight and they let each of us cadets to actually sit behind there with the pilot. And so the pilot took his hands off the wheel and I'm there in the co-pilot seat. I didn't have the sensitivity in my fingers to realize how sensitive that is. So I pulled it back, which meant the people in the back of the plane went airborne. They immediately took me out of the pilot seat. Now, that was before I discovered I didn't have the eyesight to be a pilot anyway. But it's those types of things that people actually came forward with and where we can better know each other and appreciate the humanity in the other person. I think that is something real wonderful, uh, that would be beneficial to us. Uh, best practices, we've talked about both C G and non-C G. If the state institution will pick up and perform a national analysis, my recommendation to them has been to do coherent governance, other types of governance. So you can get something that's statistically valid. And you can say, if you go with this particular form of governance, then here's what we've seen so far, not anecdotal, statistically proven. And then the last page, uh, I think we've done all those, right? Did I skip a page?
Okay, go back, go back one.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, annual board self-assessment, we talked about that in general. Community of non, uh, and C G and non-C G. Particular focus on handling citizen expect, expectations because when citizens come to us, they want immediate, right? Like you're a board member, you should be able to do this. But it takes eleven for us to actually officially do anything. Takes si, uh, six out of the eleven, takes a vote, majority vote. So one of the things is to help teach us and how do we respond and moderate any citizen expectations? So they're not sort of squeezing us when we operate on a different met, leadership system. So that's one of the things that was clearly, uh, very apparent. The other thing, I mentioned the strategic retreat, uh, training programs. And I'm talking, we were talking, not me. We were talking in that session about what other schools have been through, districts have been through, training program. Um, and I, where you see C D L O L, you see that's next to computer skills and interpersonal communication. So I'm saying I've got some defaults and things I need to improve on in that area as well. But that's what we really are suggesting that, uh, takes place uh, as part of a more rigorous execution of coherent governance. It's clearly is a program from what I've seen and heard from others that tends to, it's not proven statistically, but tends to help stabilize and reduce potentially turnover at the superintendent level. Because it appears anecdotally that superintendents under this regime will tend to feel like they have latitude to truly make a difference. So with that, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll open it up to any questions, comments, brickbats, anyone has.
All right, door is open.
Oh, one last thing, Mr. Chair, please, I'm sorry. This last page, yes, Ms. Cushenberry. This, uh, file here has like thirty different, twenty-five different files. And I encourage each and every board member and everybody who sees this to go look at those. And you become the expert on coherent governance. So that at a future point, if we're going to sit down and say, well, are there other alternatives, which there are, in terms of the leadership system? We know what this is supposed to look like and hopefully we'll put the same rigor into understanding any other alternatives. So with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it over.
Mr. Nate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think it was about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, uh, I brought up in public session about a self, a board about evaluation, how we evaluate ourselves. Uh, and when I brought it up some time ago, it was grumble, grumble, rubble, rubble. Yeah, we used to do one, on to the next thing. Um, and, and now you're bringing it up again. So, uh, I, I think maybe, uh, when I brought it up the first time, because there was hesitance to do it, maybe that's the perfect reason to do it. Uh, we need to find, I, I still believe strongly that we should, we should have some type of, uh, rubric to, uh, how are we doing? And if it involves community input, then let it involve community input. You know, if the community feels like we're doing our job, uh, and you know, we're not going home until the business is done, then, then great. If the community feels like we're not doing our job, then maybe we need to point the finger, you know? Uh, I was always told that if you point the finger at somebody, you only got three pointing back at yourself, right? So, uh, I, I mean, if, if the shoe fits, uh, but I, I'd be all about supporting some type of internal board governance, uh, rubric to find out if we are actually doing what we're safe, we want to do. Uh, we have a mission statement, but that's not guiding, that's, that's not goals. A mission statement isn't a goal. A mission statement tells us what where our overarching thing is, but I I don't know that we've ever, other than the the budget. Uh, when the the superintendent comes and says, hey, uh, let's, let's talk about how we want to spend the money or where we want to direct the money, uh, financially towards. Those objectives, uh, I think that's the closest thing that we've got to saying these are what our goals are. But as a board, I don't believe, uh, we've ever sat down and said, this is our goal, top three goals as a board. And then, cause, cause in in my, in my opinion, talking about the budget, before we've established gold, is putting the cart before the horse. Uh, we we've said, okay, yes, this is, this is where we believe that we could have the best fiscal input, uh, or the best fiscal impact. Um, uh, you know, on our students, but it doesn't necessarily say that we've had the goals. Uh, stating our goals and then figuring out how we're going to fund them, I believe is the way to do it. Uh, but I don't, I don't recall ever having goals. And I think that's a, that's a huge sort sidedness of our board and that might come out if we were actually to do an internal evaluation.
Yeah, I'm following up on my colleague, Mr. Nay. I think, um, the problem with coherent governance as we implement it, there's a couple of things. We've talked about board work sessions, we've, I mean, board retreats, but we have to make them open to the public. And so then it's, when is it a work session versus a retreat? And there was a lot of concern at the time about making sure that we were fully transparent and would we have to broadcast it by TV? And then it kind of, so we just basically, as a board, decided that wasn't feasible. We've talked about, we have done, uh, board, uh, surveys, I filled them out when I first got on the board, we just never did anything with it. Um, I think that the problems that I think we need to address with coherent governance are, number one. The thing that makes all school boards in South Carolina that I know about use a policy-based governance. Um, they use, you, most of them use the South Carolina School Board Association model policy. Um, so what we do is we do a different form of policy governance and the coherent governance, and you've gone to the conference and you probably know better than I do. Um, but I've gone down a rabbit hole on coherent governance when I was doing the results, uh, committee. The thing that distinguishes it is it's driven by results. So there's this whole monitoring of result policies. There is, um, it is the number one thing, it is the thing from which all things come out and we don't have it and never have. And I've brought that up on numerous occasions, because in our own policy books, it says that we base our. Uh, evaluation of the superintendent on our results policies, parentheses, we do not have them. So I think if we're going to commit to coherent governance, I like coherent governance, I think it's a good model. Um, I think before we talk about implementing the different things, we have to make everyone buy in. And we have to decide to actually do it the way it was intended to be done. And we have to follow through on those things, um, because we tend to sort of drift away from them as, um. And then what you run into is if you're not really locked on to these results and locked on to these OEs and these policies. It gets very harem scareum and we can get off the rails pretty quickly. So, um, I agree, I would like to see an internal board process. I think everyone, we should vote on it and we should do it with fidelity. I do not agree with hiring a consultant to come in, because we've done that, I did not find it useful. Again, because I don't think people were really all on the same page. I think if we're going to do it, we need to commit to having results policies. And we need to have a policy committee that isn't a process of constantly updating, we should have a standing policy committee. And then there's some other things, once we get that in place, when you look at what coherent governance does and some of the things that I think we could execute better on. We have too many committee meetings. Policy governance very much says, you know, the committee should only work on those things that are in our policy. Um, I think we need to look at how we just structure the whole thing. That can follow, once we've committed, we have buy-in and we decide to really do coherent governance. So again, I think we can, we need results policies and then we need board internal monitoring and we need to do it consistently. And, um, I need to have buy-in from all the board members.
Other comments? Mr. Smith, you have a comment? Pastor Gordon? Ms. Fraser?
I would definitely like to see more training on coherent governance.
I'm sorry.
Whether we have a training, whether we go to a session. But we definitely all need more training on coherent governance. And definitely when new board members come in, that training needs to happen almost immediately.
Yeah, that's, uh, let's pass this out, could you, could you pass it out to everybody? This is the last time more goals were developed.
Yeah, no, um, I said I didn't have a comment, but I I'm totally in agreeance. The coherent govern, we really need to be educated and I'm talking mainly about myself. Because just kind of, I've always heard it, but never really knew what it meant. You know, until suddenly hearing everybody talk about it, so no, the training is, that should be a top of the list here, definitely.
Yes, sir.
Um, I I'm pretty sure everybody got the the book, right? Uh, when I first got on the board, I was like, oh, cool, another book. Um, and then, uh, luckily, um, somebody was like, uh, and I'll say it, the superintendent was like, uh, maybe you should read the book. And so I read the book, um, absolutely a great place to start. Uh, and I'm disappointed I waited a year to to read the book, but I read the book. Uh, and, uh, I don't know that I'm as far down the rabbit hole as Mrs. Boatwright, but, uh, I've started going down the rabbit hole as well. Uh, but definitely read the book, there's all kinds of material out there, um, hi- highly, highly recommend. Uh, mine is actually tabbed also and highlighted.
Yeah, there also, there is a second book called Implementing Coherent Governance that, um, you can get on Kindle, so I bought that. But yeah, I think that, I'm not opposed to, I think training's important and I think we need the materials. Once we've all agreed that we're going to continue on this process and everyone's bought in and we're committed to learning the materials and following through, I think that's critically important. We did hire a consultant and Mr. Smith and Mr. Colonel Guyer and I were the only three board members left who did it. If you're, they can have a consultant to come into assess where you are, I think that's a step two. I think step one, training is a whole different thing, uh, to come in and say, this is how the board has this structured. I also, for everyone's information that's new to the board, and Colonel Guyer and Mr. Smith can correct me if I'm wrong. But we basically tried to sort of follow Ori County's model. Because a lot of our policy manual is literally cut and paste out of Ori County with some light modifications. So I think that, um, going through our current policies and making sure that they're relevant for Beaufort County. But as I recall, I got on after, right as this was being approved, our policy manual. So I did end up voting, but I was like, it was like day ten for me, I just kind of, I think I might have abstained. Um, I know it was a lot of work to get these policies done. Um, but again, I think if we don't commit to the whole framework that you've outlined. With results, with, um, delegating authority to the superintendent, um, and and that sort of thing. Then all the trainings in the world aren't going to help us.
Mr. Smith?
Well, uh, fir- first, let me stop by saying, there are other guiding, uh, uh, programs out there beside, uh, besides the, um. Besides this governance, the other governance is out there. Um, and I would stop by saying that, I think that it would be fair, before we just sign up and say, this is what we want to go with. To see what else, what what else type of other governance is out there, out there. Because, um, my question is, how many school boards in the state governed by 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 coherent governance? You know, and that, 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 that's a question I think that we ought to ask ourselves, because I remember when we did hire that company. And, uh, some people were wondering what, what, what was, what was it for and, you know, um, so forth. And wondering, were there any other governance out there? And at that time, I think it's maybe, it was maybe two or three, two or three other, uh, school boards who. May have used that governance out of the whole state and that might even be including, um, government, government, uh, county, county councils, uh, too as well. Um, but I'm not sure, don't quote me on that. But my question is. How, does this governance ser- help us serve our communities to the best, to T? I think there's other, other, other things that we should weigh an option to and see which governance better give us the best results. That as a board, that we think align with where we want to go with this district. And so, I, I just have some concern that just going and picking with it, because you've been doing something for how many other years, that that doesn't make it right. I mean, so I I think that we ought to, before we go out and hire anybody or bring somebody in, we should weigh our options and see. You know, I want to get the best bang for my buck and I I just am not sure at this time that. Whether, that we have really actually weighed our options. You know, so I just wanted to pu- put that out there and, and, uh, she, and she is right, uh, we did have, uh, Mrs. Um. Ms. Boatwright is correct, um, we did have, we did have someone come in and gave, and gave us, and at that, at that time, the board was still kind of. In the, in the, in the middle on it, everyone was not, uh, so, and 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 actually, that's how I ended up finding out. That they were, they were over, over, over different governance, because you had the leadership of the board who was pushing that governance. But to be honest, to be, um, honest, when I look at it in hindsight of what, what we do now as a board. I believe that for the most part, that we do in terms, uh, we do pass, pass the torch to the, uh, superintendent in terms, in terms of what we expect. And I mean, so I I I think the, it comes down to some, to some other things. But I think that we, uh, we're, we're operating in this, in this government as we did when we, when we first got it. But there's just a couple of components that people really, really either don't agree with. Or they just kind of ignore it and say, hey, we're going to kind of quarterback it as we go along. And that part is, is where the question comes in to where is this really the governance that this board wants? So I just put, I just put that, you know, put that, I put that out there, but I think in, in terms, in terms of support, this governance really supports the CEO. And I believe that this board has really supported the CEO slash superintendent. Um, I I don't think that there's, that there's have really been nothing that has, have been asked for, that have not been given to give the outcomes that we had, that we want. And let's just be fair, let's just be technically, I think that's the more of the line of where this governance is. That therefore that you're giving the, the CEO slash superintendent, the, the wherewithal and the, uh, tenacity to go out and do what needs to be done and, and bring it back. So I mean, so, so those are just some, some questions that I think that we just kind of have to answer as a board collectively. And I'll just leave that there, thank you.
Okay, let me see if I got it right. Coherent governance is basically training us or teaching us how to work in together, in harmony. Um, the coherence part of it is how we make decisions or how the approach we make toward even disagreeing. That, is that the value of coherent governance, basically?
If, if I may, coherent governance basically allows, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Coherent governance basically is us stepping back from more operational issues and delegating that to the superintendent. It also requires us to establish results, policies, or, um, operational expectations. And establish accountability for those. So it, it, it is a system that when properly executed, from what I learned, and there were two school districts there. That had had some really amazing turnarounds. Uh, I think they are in, one of them at least is in your bu- your folder. And so it's all about making sure there's clarity, there's an endpoint where all of us get judged. Self-assessment is Ms. Boatwright's talking about, uh, Mr. Nay is talking about. Coming back and saying, well, Carlton, you know, you didn't really communicate in a way that motivated someone to want to do as a one of eleven. Not a single in the person, but as one of eleven. You didn't really motivate that individual to feel compelled to go out and, you know, just drive hard to achieve. And so coherent governance basically keeps me as one of eleven from sort of muddying the waters. In terms of direction, timelines, when you got to deliver. So people feel like, yeah, I, I'm, they're supporting me, I'm going for it. Now, we have that, uh, as Mr. Smith and others have noted, Ms. Boatwright noted, Mr. Nay talked about the effort to train through the bookers, right? We have that, but what I learned, because I didn't go through that first iteration of introduction. What I learned is, yes, there are other things we can do and we probably would be even better at executing if we did those, if that helps.
Mr. Nay?
I, I'm, I'm not opposed to, uh, looking at other governance models. Uh, I think if, uh, if, I like, I like the coherence covenant models, I, I know there's like intellectual, there's, there's a bunch of other, uh, models out there that I've kind of looked into. Uh, but I think if any board member, uh, feels, uh, you know, once they go down their own rabbit hole. If you feel like, uh, you want to make a presentation about another governance model to the board, I I would totally be okay with that. I think that's a great opportunity for, uh, to to present some, some other ideas.
I served on a board before, a school board. It was a small, uh, school district. It had a high school, a middle school, and two elementary schools, uh, total about fifteen hundred students. The superintendent was a area superintendent. He covered, uh, my school district, he covered another school district, another army base, a hundred and fifty miles away. So he, he, he kind of bounced back and forth. As a board member there, first of all, we were appointed, not, uh, elected, so, you know. Uh, we got, this is basically by where the housing area was, is how you were appointed. We were very, very involved in this, the details, the day-to-day details of running those three schools. Uh, we were expected to take feedback from our community, from parents and so on, and go right to the teacher. Or right to the, to the principal and deal with it. And in fact, all student discipline issues came to us. We were, we were the student, uh, you know, kid was doing bad things, he had to come to us, either individually or as a group. And, and so we were down in the weeds, coming here. And seeing the size and scope and, and this is one of the problems when you go to the School Board Association and you look at the seventy-some districts. A lot of districts are very small districts. And the superintendents that they have are generally people from the district who were principals. And were then elevated to be the superintendent. And they didn't do a nationwide search and, you know, uh, find it, it was an internal kind of thing. So they're very into a very policy-driven, right down into the direction of, of each of the, uh, schools and, and the teachers and so on. Here we have the largest company, the largest business in the county. We have twenty-one thousand dedicated customers. We have double that number of parents that are invested in these, uh, their students' achievement. We have three thousand employees. We have a annual budget of seven hundred and fifty million dollars a year, three quarters of a billion dollars every year to manage. Army, seven hundred and fifty million. And so, uh, we have to, we have to act like a board of trustees. We have to look at the big picture and give our superintendent, our CEO. The authority to do the business, because frankly, none of us. And here's, here's one of the differences that I also see. One of the differences is in a corporate board, you generally have people who are experts in their field. You're, you're selected, you get an attorney, you get a, uh, accountant, you get a HR person. You, you, you get talent to come in and help you. I've, I've reported to community college and private university boards and that's how they are configured. So, but what they are is oversight, but oversight in very specific areas, based on the expertise of the board members that are selected. As an elected board, we have all different kinds of, uh, experience levels, life experience and business experience and educational experience. None of our experience of any member of this board matches the experience of Dr. Rodriguez. So, uh, we have to trust and give guidance and say. So, uh, we have to trust and give guidance and say, especially in, in the dollars and cents, and especially in, in how the overall system runs. But the coherent governance ac- actually uses a way of, with the results, we, you're looked at by what you achieve and then we're responsible to deal with the politics, to deal with getting the funds and, and, and interfacing with the community. Unfortunately, what I found here is we have been focusing more on down in the actual operations in the individual schools and, uh, a whole lot of, well, you ought to have this and you ought to have that and we need this and we need that. That's, that's beyond what we should focus on, given the areas of responsibilities we have and the, and the areas of expertise we have in, in, in the areas here. And so I, I have a, I, I, I tried to get, we, we had a evaluation report that we did and how, how many questions was it? 50-some? And basically, we, they handed out a form and said, judge the board in these areas. And it was a one to five, something like that, in every area, one being bad, four, five being good. It was turned in, we took a look at it. It was so fragmented that, that it was just worthless. Uh, it didn't, didn't really say anything. We asked last year to have an offsite to come in and get to know one another, which, because we don't know one another, unfortunately. And have a frank discussion of how we're going to act individually and, and, uh, corporately as a board. We asked for, pick a Saturday, what Saturdays are you available? We didn't hear from most of the board members. I put my Saturdays in. I, I thought, well, people aren't excited about it or think it's worthwhile to spend, because that's what we'd have to do. We'd have, we'd have to spend a Saturday and go someplace and it'd have to be recorded because it were public. But I think it could be done without having, I agree with Ingrid, we don't need to have an expert, uh, accountant, I don't think, or a, uh, facilitator. I think, I think we just need to talk about one another, get to know one another and at least set up a plan on how we're going to get there. We won't solve everything in that one session, but at least we could have, come up there with a plan, a milestone plan of this is what we're going to do to get better. So that's, that's my thoughts on it. Ms. Boatright?
Thank you. I think everyone's kind of on the same page. For me, I like coherent governance. I think we should stick with coherent governance, uh, because we've done a lot of work already. And either way you go, you're going to be looking at a policy-based thing. I think the thing that we need to revisit, as much as getting to know each other, but for me, there's two things. And, and this is the problem that the rest of the world's having in every industry because we have information overload. So you have to have targeted information. You get too much and too little at the same time. I get 75 emails a week from my church, but I miss the one that said that they had changed the time of the service that Sunday, right? So I think that a little bit what's going on the board is that if you just have this constant noise of 11 board members, and what I love about, uh, Beaufort County School District is we are a tremendously diverse school district. And I don't, I mean economically, uh, ge- the geography's different, the, that we have in the schools, we have different racial makeups, different, uh, income levels. And so we are such a slice of America as a whole in Beaufort County, and I think that makes us a really rich county. But we can't have, we're 11 board members and we can't have every single board member bringing their individual thing that they want to talk about all the time because what we're going to end up with is too much information and yet not enough actually focusing on the things that we were elected to focus on, the budget, academic achievement, um, personnel issues, those sorts of things. Those things need to be clearly laid out and those things need to be focused on. We need to delegate to the superintendent and his staff, the operation of all the policies, which I think sometimes we struggle with. And, and then we need to kind of figure out how to make our meetings more effective so that we're, we know when we walk away that we have taken care of the business we're supposed to take care of and more efficient. And I am, over my five years on the board, I have risen the efficiency level of our meetings higher and higher on the list of concerns I have with the board. Because the meetings, you know, the number of meetings we have and, and the number, the length of the meetings and the different things that we all kind of can complain about, it turns off the public. Because the public is like, I can't tune into this meeting because A, we're not, I want to hear about the budget, I want to hear about personnel, I want to hear about academic achievement, but if it's a four-hour meeting and that's only brushed upon, we find, I, most of my constituents don't watch or listen to board meetings. But every once in a while, a certain topic, kind of, you can kind of hear it percolating through the community and it comes to you, you know, that someone's concerned. I mean, obviously like the book banning was a thing that everyone was paying attention to. But I think if we can figure out a way to make coherent governance, um, a really strong policy that we all agree on, that I think what we'll all find is that we feel better about the things that we are, that are actually on the agenda, that we're spending time on, and we will have a more engaged community because they will know, oh, I'm going to tune in because I want to hear what's going on the board, not, I want to listen for four hours about things that don't affect me. So I think these are the things that I think coherent governance is very poised to do that. I think changing into a different policy-based thing is an option, but again, it would be another year of sort of rebuilding from scratch. And just so people that, um, I was new to the board in, what year? I think I took office in 2021, but I think I ran in 2020. Um, coming out of that period was a very turbulent period for the board. And there was a lot of acrimony, there was a lot of public, um, what's the word I want to say, public disgust with the board. I think in the current political climate, uh, you would see the state superintendent getting involved in what was going on. So we don't, we, this was an attempt to organize it. And I think, um, to the members that were there at the time and, you know, the two here, to their credit, they got it together, put in coherent governance, they did do a lot of work, came up with this model and really, and we were able to recruit an excellent superintendent. What I worry about is if we start to drift off the hard work that was done five, six years ago or try to change course midstream, we're going to end up with a lot of acrimony and dysfunction. So my recommendation is, and I don't know if I need to make a motion or how the chair wants to proceed on this, is that we recommit to coherent governance. We can do some internal trainings before we decide we're going to pay a consultant. Because last time she came down and we had all these questions and she didn't know the questions we had. So, um, I think that was not a good use of time or money. But recommit, have some internal trainings. Carlton, uh, Mr. Dallas can bring his materials, those of us who've read the book can talk and just sort of agree on what we're doing and get a more efficient and more effective, um, 2026. That would be my goal. I'm happy to make that motion if you think that's necessary. Mr. Dallas has the suggestion.
Yeah. Excuse me. I would support strongly what, uh, Madam Secretary is saying. I think this has been a wonderful conversation because what I'm hearing is there's something salvageable in what we've done and what we've invested so far. It is working, but we want to be the best at execution of it anywhere. So I think that's, getting every board member involved is really the solution. So when we talk about self-assessment, is how do we help ourselves become better leaders? And using this system since there's so much invested in it, and I, I just think that's the way to go. So if she makes that motion, I will second it.
Uh, Mr. Smith, before.
So, once again, I've sat back and I've listened, I've listened to my colleagues and, and there's still a couple underlying, underlying questions in, in terms of even, uh, moving forward with this and, and actually shopping. And I, I, once again, kind of feel like we kind of rush it, rushing things because I would ask, what would be the rush on this? But, so, just a couple, a couple of questions that I was just thinking, um, so do we treat this like it's a business or a, 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 a company? Because, you know, uh, we said, I just listened about, you know, about how we talk about there are other school boards and, I mean, uh, there are other different, uh, board styles, but they also, uh, this is one of the bigger districts and I understand that. So then the, the question we're, we're coming is, where do we find the, the culture? Because we talk about, on, on one hand too, to understand that we're losing students to some of these charter schools. And these charter schools, when I talk to people in the community and ask them, why are you leaving? Because the school board treat, treat, treat the, uh, treat the parents and treat the, uh, the students like it's a business. And so what my mind telling me from someone who talks to the community is that if we're going to continue to treat it like a business, then we're going to continue to, to lose, to lose our, our students. And if you have no students, then you, you have, you have, you have no reason to be in business. And so then the next question comes to me, to me as well is that, where, where's the cultural piece in this? And, 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 and in terms of business? Where, where's the cultural piece in, in terms of if you, if you, if you're, if you're treating a, a business, then you're about numbers and certain things, you're not really enter the culture and, and different things. You know, I've heard my colleagues say that, you know, that, that this is one of the greatest districts because we have so much different attributes of, of, of the country and that we have a very diverse district and all. But if, if, if different areas have different needs and, 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 and how they operate or, or, or what they, uh, how they, uh, interact with different people to get different results, then with, I would, this governance allows that. We, we, we talk about your board, your board and principal relationship and, and things of, of that nature, I don't see where this, where this governance kind of, kind of, kind of, uh, kind of allows that. That can be, you know, can be dangerous. As, as we said, you know, visiting schools and people bringing different things, you know, that, that could, you know, it's, those, to me, there are, there are definitely concerns with this governance and, and what that looks like. And then another one, my question is too, is we are a member of the South Carolina School Board Association. We pay them, as, 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 this board paid them a lot of money. We paid them a whole lot of money. With being a part of them and understanding them, and they're giving us the leadership and, and we follow, we follow, pretty much, we follow their direction as they, a paying member, what are they, what are, what are they advising? Because like I said, a lot of their members aren't using this governance. So I, I mean, I'm saying that I, I, I want to understand this so that we can serve each and every kid every day. That's my goal, every kid every day. But I don't believe that this governance allows us to serve every kid every day. And we're saying that we're losing our students to charter schools and the parents in the community are saying, look, uh, we don't, we, we don't feel that, that, that we're connected to the district. So to me, this governance is more of a corporate, is, is a, is a corporate, uh, streamlined numbers associated governance. So is that, so my question is, is that what we really want to stick with moving forward? This, I mean, so those are just some things that kind of gi- give me a little, a little hesitancy, a little hesitancy. And actually, this, this, this board have come a long way and actually this board hired Dr. Rodriguez under that same, uh, under that same regime that we were talking about. At the end of the day, we were still moving and we were still, we, we, we still moved some mountains. This, the, the same board that we were, that we were just talking about is the same board that passed the bomb referendum that wasn't passed. So, I mean, what, what, what are we getting it done and were we really operating in, 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 in this, in this, in this, uh, governance? Absolutely not, that's why we're discussing it. So that's just some food for thought in terms of rushing it and moving it forward. That's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I categorically disagree with my esteemed colleague from the third district. Um, but something also I would like to bring up is, uh, in, in, in the, in the future, when all of us are gone, uh, and after Dr. Rodriguez has retired from superintendent from the school district, um, what type of governance, um, uh, what am I, what's the word? I'm like, yes, what type of governance attracts, uh, a superintendent these days? Um, and, and I'm not necessarily necessarily saying coherent governance, but what, what, uh, what tenants, uh, of, of a good governance policy is attractive to a superintendent? Yes, sir.
As a superintendent, you need the freedom to lead and to lead the school district and to make the operational decisions for the school district. There, there are 11 board members in this particular board, uh, each one with, uh, varying perspectives. A lot of commonality on, on some things, but, but some varying perspectives. And, uh, and sometimes when we reach down into the work of staff, uh, to try to delegate, to try to, uh, influence, uh, the work of staff, that becomes, that oftentimes can create dysfunction. And so as a superintendent, what you want to do is you want to try to find, uh, the best match of, that gives you the freedom to operate and the flexibility to, uh, to lead and to run the operational matters for the district. Uh, you understand accountability, you understand, uh, the desire for, uh, results in different areas and, and you, you, you aspire to hit those, okay? But to do it, you, you want to have the flexibility, uh, to lead and to do it, uh, and to manage your team the way that you need to do those things. Uh, and those decision makings, uh, are attractive to any superintendent when they, this decision-making abilities are attractive to any superintendent, uh, gives them the flexibility. One of the first slides, uh, that you went through talked about, um, creativity, innovation, it talked about, uh, uh, the, the opportunity and the flexibility, uh, to, to manage and lead all the operational matters. What I think superintendents, uh, don't necessarily want is, um, they don't want to have to wait two weeks to make a decision because they have to come back to the board to make every operational decision and every operational matter. Uh, they don't want, uh, to own, uh, you know, the responsibility for the decisions that they did not make or were not allowed to make. Um, if the, if, if, if they see something, uh, that they would want to lead and manage in a different direction, uh, they want the flexibility to do that and the accountability comes with it, you know? Uh, but I think that's, to answer your question, um, the, the freedom to manage all the operational matters of the system within, I think everybody would tell you, within the policies of the board.
I'd like to, uh... Oh, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Freyder.
My thought with the coherent governance is that as board members, you need to learn your role and what is our responsibility and what is a superintendent's responsibility. Think sometimes we overreach and extend ourselves into what we think we can control and the governing policy and why we need to get more in-depth in it is because a few of us need to know where our role is, what we're responsible and where we actually sit on this bus as it concerns to helping drive the decisions in this district. So getting more detail into coherent governance needs to be a priority so that we can function better, build upon what the other boards have done instead of trying to tear it down and make things happen.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to address the culture issue. When Dr. Rodriguez came in, he told us right up front that his priority is culture, systems, classroom. He is the driver of culture and I've, I've seen how the culture has changed district-wide since Dr. Rodriguez has been the superintendent. He has initiated the systems, uh, collecting the data to understand where, uh, the focus should be, where resources should be applied. And then the classroom, I've seen the emphasis on, uh, professional learning communities, uh, the emphasis on instructional reviews into the classroom. And we have watched, we, we didn't drive this culture, we didn't drive this system, he did. But to your point, sir, Mr. Smith, we still have a responsibility, I feel, and, and I know you do because I've seen you do the same thing that I do. I visit the schools, I don't visit all the schools. I visit the schools. I don't visit all the schools unless I'm invited to go to the school, but I am, I ask to visit the schools in my district. Every fall and every spring, I send an email to this principals of the schools in my district saying, I'd like to come and, and have a chat with you about how things are going, what can I do for you and so on. Info copy Dr. Rodriguez saying, you know? And then I say, you tell me when it's at your convenience. And I'll come and we'll sit down. And I just finished doing that with, uh, my, my schools, uh, last couple of weeks. And I, and I just ask questions. How's it going? Have you got the resources? What's your plan? What do you, tell, tell me what you do. What's going on with your S I C? What are you hearing from the community? And I, I get information that I can come back to the board when something happens or mention about that particular school. I can say, yo, wait a minute. I know where they're doing, I know where they're going. They're doing fine and everything. If, if I have a, if I have a concern or a complaint, I don't say anything about that. That, any negative thing that I've got about that school goes to Dr. Rodriguez. But I, if I can feed him some sugar and say, this is what you're doing good. I went to Port Royal Elementary, you went, and you're an excellent school for being a below average school in one grading year. Congratulations. And say that to the staff there, you know, that, that's, that's the culture. And I see you all the time doing that in the schools. So this coherent governance doesn't stop us from understanding, and, and you know as well as I, that every school has a slightly different culture and slightly different way of doing things under the umbrella of the district culture that, that Dr. Rodriguez has established. So coherent governance doesn't take away that. The business part though, the actual business part, what we get hammered on all the time is how much taxes that we are causing to be, uh, gathered in our behalf and what are you doing to do that right? And what are you doing about what, what's being purchased on the referendum? Those are the things that, that we can gather from that community and you do that all the time. And so do you, y'all do that. And that's, that's our role to come to the superintendent and say, this is what I heard. And, and I've, I've come to the superintendent for my little visits, uh, with these schools and say, this is what I heard from each of the schools. And frankly, it's all pretty good, but there were a couple of things that, what do you, what do you know about this shortage and so on? And he takes it from there. I don't, I don't follow through on that. That's his decision. But I, it's another conduit of information for the superintendent. And that's what we should be doing is providing that. And same with our community. When you hear things in the community, which we all do, and from parents and others, give it to the superintendent. So he hears it from a different source. Coherent governance doesn't stop you from doing that. In fact, I, I think it's kind of main part of our role to do that. Now, do we, are we involved in the business? Absolutely. Absolutely. But we all want the kids to learn. We all want our teachers to stay, the teachers to excel and achievement to be improved and it is improving. Some, and that's, that's one of the stories. That we have people come in here and they tell us how bad this is. And then we hear the, we hear from the superintendent that this group is improving faster than everybody else. And that's for us to go out to that community to say, wait a minute, you've come in and, and beat us up on this, but here are the, here's the facts. The facts are that that community, that particular demographic is improving faster than everybody else. Do we have more to do? Absolutely. Absolutely. We're not satisfied, but there's progress. So that's, that's what we do. So I, I, and I, I think that a motion would be absolutely appropriate. And let's, let's figure it out. And here's another part of why this is important. A year from now, there could be seven new members on this board. We need to have this locked down. We need to have this locked down before potentially seven new members come in there. So it's really a responsibility for us to find the time and make the effort to get this locked down. So Adam, Secretary?
I move that the board formally reaffirms its commitment to the coherent governance policy framework and that all governance actions, including board policy development, monitoring committee structure and superintendent accountability be conducted in alignment with the current governance model as adopted by this board.
Discussion, Mr. Smith.
Uh, first I'd like to, uh, just to, uh, stop by saying, um, just to a, answer the, uh, I mean, just to respond. Uh, one thing I like to say we can also brag about, I think that, I think that our style has not stopped anyone or any superintendent to want to come to the, come to this board because I believe that one day we can brag about it that I believe that we've given our superintendent everything that we have, we have pretty much been asked for in terms of asking from when we first got here. We never had E Ds. That, uh, it was a host of. People may be watching just to know that we may, we have, we have some noise that is going off right now. That's why we, we paused.
Oh, I'm hearing that. It was bad. I can't hear it.
We get it on the other side. It's a wire thing.
Right. So there were, there were several things that, positions that we have created. And they were in, uh, E Ds, there were, there were several other things that we have not had prior to arrival. And I, I don't, I don't remember this board saying at, at, at no time when it was ever asked, hey, I need this. I, I always heard the board say, granted, granted, granted. So I, so I don't think the style, once again, the style of how we operate so much solely is, is a catalyst of whether we, uh, get a superintendent or not, because I think if the superintendent wants to, wants to have fully, uh, full, full, uh, order of operation, I think that would, that we have, that we've always done that. Uh, so, uh, we, we always have the, uh, the option of, uh, call the emergency meeting of a decision needs to be made. And we have done that in the past too. On this board here, we haven't, we haven't had any of those meetings. Um, we hadn't had any emergency means to, uh, fulfill a obligation or to fulfill, fulfill something that needs to be, uh, to get done. We, we have, we have not done that. But in the past, we have had those, um, and, and prior years, and, and also, um, and, and, and also another, I'm, I'm not going to support this motion today is because when you go out to those schools and you ask those questions, what do you need? Well, that could be looked at too as in you're in the weeds. When, 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 when you're saying, oh yeah, you're doing this good. Okay. When, when, so what happens when the principal say, well, 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 what, well, actually the same question in return. Well, what are you hearing? And, and they, and you tell them something that he, that you, that you, that they disagree with. And they get mad and they say, oh, I don't, I don't like that. The board member was talking to me and the board member told me that, you know, they were saying about this and then they go to the superintendent. And so now it can be, now you could be frowned upon because you're simply having a conversation with the principal or even, even the staff member. So sometimes it, it, I mean, it almost could be bang if you didn't, bang if you did, if you do, dang if you did, dang if you don't. So I, so, 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 I mean, that too still could be looked at as, and you're, and you're in the weeds when you have, when we, we're having those conversations, talking to those people and you, you tell them what they're doing good. You ask them, what do I need? And they're like, oh, well, you know, this, the person that came and they asked, well, is that normal? Is that you, 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 so I mean, so I mean, cause I, I've, I've experienced and I've had other people who've asked me, oh, or was so and so board member came by and says, is that normal? Or, you know? I, I've, 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 I've had those things. So I, so, so I think too that still does not answer that question. And that could be looked at too as, and the reason why we're saying, how can I support you? Well, my support comes from the district, from the superintendent and his staff. Why does the board member need to support me? To me, that's a part of that culture. That's a part of that relationship. That's a part of sitting down with the, with the principal, I will never forget. And, and one, one place where I learned this was, uh, when principal, uh, Davina Coleman was the, became, became the principal at Ladies Island Elementary School. And one thing at first I was hesitant, when she's asked to sit down with me and said that I want to talk out the plan. I want, she said, do you know my plan? I said, no. And so I was, I was thinking at that time, maybe your plan should be taken to the superintendent. And she said, no. As my board member, if you don't know my plan, that's a problem. And as a board member, I want to know what your plan is, what you expect. But that conversation could have been twisted in, in, in a way, in, in, in any kind of way, but that's the, that's still a board member and a principal relationship. Under this governance, I don't think that, that, that is really to some degree that, 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 that should be had. Because there's a gray area. So on the basis upon that, I'm going to vote no.
Either come, come in discussion before we're ready to vote. All right. Motion's been moved and seconded. You want to read them? You want to read the motion again, please?
I move that the board for formally reaffirms its commitment to the coherent governance policy framework and that all governance actions, including board policy development, monitoring committee structure, the superintendent accountability be conducted in an alignment with the coherent governance model as adopted by this board.
Okay. All those in the room, uh, that, uh, want to approve this motion, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Okay, uh, online. Pardon me? Hey, hey, is aye. David Carr is aye. Okay. That means all those opposed?
Mr. Smith opposes.
Oppose, so. Want to oppose the rest of them? With aye. All right. Now, now that we've made this motion, we need to figure out how we're going to execute this motion. And so when are we going to have, when are we going to be able to, uh, uh, come up with a, at least a milestone or something?
I think that Mr. Carlton's, uh, recommendations would be excellent to, uh, implement here. I think that we need some sort of a board retreat and it can have an element of getting to know each other, but to focus on where we're at. Um, and, and kind of looking at what we have and doing essentially a training, um, with the materials. We need to make sure that the new board members have, I would actually recommend giving them both books if they don't have both of them to read in advance. Um, and then I would also recommend that we, at that meeting, we develop a, uh, a board evaluation tool.
When do we do it?
And actually for listening to what Mr. Smith was saying, maybe we need to start developing a policy of how the board interacts when they actually go into the schools and with the staff members as well. So that gray area might be eliminated as well.
Sure, sure.
So I'll take that on if, if we could have about 30 days.
After the holidays or?
After, right after the holidays, January?
Absolutely. And if, if it's okay, we will solicit feedback from all the board members and, uh, take it from there.
Any objection to, to that?
David Carr says something.
David Carr?
David Carr said, I would suggest late January or early February.
January, early February. That sounds reasonable.
Think so.
Okay. All right. So I, I think that's good. Reconvene, please. The next item is the Board Meeting 2026 Board Meeting Calendar. You all should have a copy. And let Ms. Cushionberry kind of walk through month by month with you all, since she is a fount of all knowledge of a calendar. So, Ms. Cushionberry?
We will start with January. And January 6 would be our first meeting. At that meeting, we would do the election of officers and have it as a board meeting. It was also suggested at that meeting that we start that meeting at 5 o'clock instead of 6. So we don't know the will of the board, if that's something that's pushing it or if we should keep public session at 6.
Any issues?
Can I make a question, have a question? So the School Board Association recommends, and most boards do their executive session after the meeting. Because right now, a lot of times we get here at 4:00, 4:30, and there's not enough, or there's a big gap of time, or we're kind of rushing through executive session to get out here at 6. Could we do something like start the public session earlier, say at 5, which is when most of us are here? Most of us are here by 5 at the earliest. I mean, sometimes 4:00, 4:30, depending on what's on executive session. And then do our regular public meeting. And at the end of the public meeting, then we would enter executive session.
Yeah. What about those items that we have to make a motion and vote on after executive session?
What they do is they then return back to public session. It just allows a little bit better scheduling and a little bit more of the public session upfront and less of the, you know, the executive session. If someone is waiting to, because they, the public can't participate in executive session by nature. So if someone is waiting to hear the results of an executive session motion, then they would have to wait the duration of the meeting, but I think that's pretty rare. So that is actually what the South Carolina School Board's best practices is, and it is what the majority of districts do. And I think it would make a lot better use of staff time, public time. Doesn't really impact us because we're here for the duration.
Got a comment?
I'll say that again, excuse me.
Starting the public session meeting at 5 rather than 6 and doing moving executive session to the end of public session. So we would run through the public part of the meeting. At the end of the meeting, before adjourning, we would enter into executive session to address executive session items. Then we would return to public session to vote on executive session and then adjourn.
I think absolutely not. I think because the public, if we're being transparent, the public is watching at the beginning of the meeting and the actual motions that the actions that the board is taking is being upfront publicly. So I mean, if it's not broke, why fix it? I think this is one of those moves, moves again, to be able to keep the public not involved. So I mean, let me finish respectfully once again. So that's my prerogative and where I see that. I if it's, once again, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I don't see a reason to move it because that is the public's business and we're doing it. And at the time, if we say that, that we do want people to come and see, and people, believe it or not, the public is watching. And they do, they do want to know what's the motion coming in and out of executive sessions. So what would be the, what would be the reason to push it? That would make it such a what would be the reason to change how we operate?
Yeah, that's, and you weren't here when, when I was talking about it upfront. I think the problem, that's been suggested to move public session or to move the start time of the meetings till 5, correct? So there was some discussion on that. One of the problems is, is that we guess how long executive session is going to take. So sometimes we get done really early and then we're just kind of milling around for 45 minutes. Other times we are rushing, and that's more frequent where we're like, you know what? We got to get back to public session. So if we move it to the end, which is what the vast majority of school districts do and what is recommended by the South Carolina School Board Association, we would eliminate that problem for rushing the executive session. The other thing is executive session by nature is not open to the public. So why we would be concerned about the public watching the part of executive session that happens in a closed room off camera, I don't see the benefit of that. So again, I don't know why we ever set it up this way. We are the anomaly, not the other way around. We are doing it differently than other school boards and differently than is recommended by the South Carolina School Board Association. I'm sure there was a reason to do that at some point. I don't know what it is, but I would like to see the, excuse me, the public part be loaded up to the front and the part that we do privately loaded to the end. And for those people who want to see the outcome, who want to hear the outcome of the executive session motions that we vote on, they will have no witness to the discussion. But if they want to be here when we announce the motions, they can do so. And then we could offer another public comment period after executive session motions if someone wanted to comment on the motions coming out.
Can I answer why it was done, changed the way that it? The reason why that it was changed to have executive session first is because the previous boards did not want to stay as late. Because the board meetings themselves, regular board meetings were already going to 10 and 11 o'clock at night. So therefore, they did not want to have executive sessions because in the past, we have had board meetings that lasted until 1 a.m. in the morning. So it was started to have executive sessions first at the beginning because staff was, staff was involved. So they started early and the intention was to get that part of the business done so that they would not be there till 1 and 2 o'clock in the morning, which has happened previously. That was the change.
Now, I wow.
Oh, sorry. For you two, yeah.
We didn't have coherent governance at the time. It was policy and it was changed.
Okay, so one of the things is, excuse me, the fact that the staff people come and they stay. So that would be a concern. I think the core issue is, is there a way for us to consolidate the length of our meetings? So I don't know what protocols might enable us to do that, but you know, whatever.
So we have at the end of our agenda saying that the meeting, there was a board motion that the meetings had to end by no later than 9:15 unless a vote is taken. And if the vote, if the meeting had not ended by 9:15, then we come back the next day, start at 6 o'clock and start the meeting again. So that was board action is why that is on the agenda. So the board meeting is to end no later than 9:15 unless there is a vote to extend it. Otherwise, you come back the very next day, it starts at 6 o'clock to continue the meeting.
Ms. Fraser, did you have something?
Oh, no. You were going to point out the 9:15.
About to say about the 9:15. So if we're not finished with the regular meeting and have to go into executive session, then we will just have to come back the next day. So it's already covered.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
So someone, so, so is, so what's the, I mean, I've heard what, what she just said about, about the, about wanting to change it. So I'm still not grasping now what's the, what's the, the problem in terms to why we, why we want to change it? Because I think now, we also, at times, there are also times too where we have, we entertain attorneys. And, 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 and in most recent years, we have had, we have not had a problem with getting attorneys. And actually, attorneys have come, have come to us at a reasonable time. And so therefore, we have had not to ask them to come later. This will, will bring them later. And some attorneys may not, I mean, I mean, that may not be, this may not be conducive because most of the times when we start, it's during times where they are, where they actually are available. And not, and not just attorneys, just other different things. And did you say that y'all want to start the meeting at 5 o'clock? Because at 5 o'clock, people are still at work. So once again, if that's true, why would we want to start a meeting at 5 o'clock? And I know more, I know more times that we normally start, we start at 4:30 and 5 o'clock. In terms of executive session, that's, that's my point, our point from my understanding that we start at those times. And the regular meeting starts at 6 o'clock when parents can get off. And do we have parent, student performances and different things when parent are able to come and see those things? So did I miss something or did I, did I miss interpret, interpretate something somewhere?
My interpretation is just that we changed it to, for the board's convenience because board members didn't want to stay till 1 a.m. That's why it was changed. We, we are an anomaly in the South, the state of South Carolina. This is how it is done everywhere else. Now, as far as like work times, I think there's always going to be challenges with people getting to work. Traffic's a challenge if they want to come see a student performance. I'm very grateful that we now have board meetings, South abroad and North abroad, because it's basically nigh possible for someone North abroad to get to South abroad by any period of time. So, but I think that, to your point, I think that, that there was our potential wrinkles to that, but that's not why we do it. We did it because the board didn't want to be here late. I think that we should get in line. I think it's better for the public. I think it's better for staff. I think that it's better for the board in the long term because we now have a policy in place that we don't allow meetings to go past 9:15. And we haven't voted on that. When I first, my first couple of years, that happened not infrequently where we would have to vote to extend the meeting. That has gotten tremendously better. So I don't, I don't think, you guys, I don't think have had to have that vote since you've been on the board. And I would say it's probably been a good two years since we've had to deal with that. But to me, we front load the meeting with the stuff that the public actually witnesses and we backload the meeting with the stuff that the board has to take care of privately.
Dr. Rodriguez, what is your feeling as far as the impact on the staff?
I mean, as long as our, our meetings are efficient, you know, and, and they're not running till, you know, 12 or 1:00 in the morning or 11:00, right? We often finish meetings at, you know, 8:30 or 9 o'clock, right? And so, I mean, that, it's probably fine. The student performance and points of celebration might just be something we move back on the agenda. Instead of having it at the beginning, slide it back a little bit on the agenda. Because transporting students for student performances sometimes, for instance, if you're going from, from, you know, well, our school here, bus routes that are finishing up, you know, at 5 o'clock, they may, they may, that may not be a possibility, but we may need to move it back on the agenda. That's a, that's one way to handle that, I think.
So if we're saying that we want to start the board meetings at 5 o'clock in the actual business part of it, I am really concerned because, and, and we're moving, and we're moving executive, executive session, like, then we're telling the community, we don't want them, we don't want them here. Because the community don't get off until 5 o'clock. So we would, we would really be rearranging our, our, our whole, our whole a, a, agenda. And so that would also mean too, then we should, we shouldn't have people come up and say that, that we want to do something first because we want to move someone up on the agenda because they traveled from Columbia or they traveled from Greenville and respect their time. Then, then, then I won't be willing to do that, to do that either because that, I mean, that, that will be contradicting what, what this is, what the change is making. Once again, my question too is, if it's, if it's not broke, why fix it? I think that this is, that this is not a smart move on the, on the, on the boards if we want the community to participate. And also, we like to say, oh, well, we don't want, well, staff have to go home and take care of their kids outside at some point in time. I see where during, during certain parts of the meeting where staff gets done with their presentations or different things or the executive sessions where they go home to, they go home, certain staff, it's not, some of the meetings are not tied to them, they go home to their families. So this right here contradicts a lot of what we've been saying. And, and I'm just really trying to understand where, because since I can never remember, we've always, since I've been on this board, we've always had executive session first. And that's why, that's why we alter it so that we can get people out of here. That's why, that's why we come in as board members, sometimes at 4 o'clock, 4:30, so that we can go in and get, and get the actual business of the board done. So by the time 6 o'clock comes around, we're out of there and we're ready to start the meeting at 6 o'clock. And to me, the more I hear board members wanting to change the times of the meeting, as one of my, was one of my colleagues would say, former colleagues would say on this board, if you don't got the time, get off the board. If you don't want, if you don't want to come to these meetings and you don't want to put the time in as a board member to serve your community, then maybe this board ain't for you. But what this board is not is for us to treat it like a, a country club. And it seems more and more like we begin to treat this board like a country club and say, we want to cut down the time every time I look, or we want to cut the meeting down, we want to cut this down. I've already been quiet enough and we've already been, have cut down so many different times of meetings and where we're starting to analyze when people, when people speak and, and, and how long the meetings are. Oh, you know, well, let's talk about it after the meeting is over. Or let's talk about it before the meeting. So what's the point of having the meetings? I am really getting tired of us treating, beginning to treat this thing in some, in some areas of a, of a country club. If you don't want to be on the board and you don't have time for it, then don't be on the board, get off.
I wasn't actually planning on speaking on this today, except it came up as changing the time. And we have talked about it before because when I went to my board training, they said executive session should be held at the end of the meeting. And I think there's some reasons to do it that I brought forward to the board, one of which is we don't, we have compressed time because we need to get out of executive session by 6. So we quite frequently are kind of rushing through the end. And I think it'd be nice to have the boards, I think there could be some pros to doing it. And again, it's what everyone else does. The theory here is that prior to us changing the board, we had, that we've increased community engagement in the board by changing executive session to coming before the board. I would dispute that. I don't see a lot of community engagement that's come out of that change. But what I want to address here is we had public, we had one public comment today that said, we need to respect each other. When I bring forward some ideas, and I have a couple of thoughts about it, and it's documented with the South Carolina School Board, I'm not out in left field making something up, I'm just like, let's consider this. And the response is, get off the board. I don't think that's respectful, Mr. Smith. That is an ad hominem. I know you're recording me right now, I don't think that's respectable either. That's fine. But I'm saying this is all part of what we just talked about with coherent governance, right? I'm bringing forward some ideas, we can vote on it, we can table it, doesn't have to come up. I think it's worth just talking about at this moment. But I don't think that means I treat the board like a country club, nor do I think it treats the board like I need to get off of it because I don't have time. I'm here at pretty much every single meeting. And so I think we do need to talk about what it means to be respectful when we have these discussions. This was not a particularly inflammatory idea to throw out. And my goal is to make it better for the public and for the staff. From my point of view, I'm going to be here no matter what. I'm going to be here at four o'clock when we have executive session. I'll be here till 1:00 a.m. if we need to, because we have done that a couple of times. Has nothing to do with my time. But I really do not like the idea that someone would tell me that when I bring forward a pretty reasonable thing for discussion, that I'm told I don't have the time and I should get off the board.
Let's, let's, let's bring it to, let's go ahead and make a motion.
I mean, I, I mean, I find a table until later because I don't really have all that much I care about. It's just it was brought up because of the five o'clock.
Well, is, if, if there's any, anybody else that wants to make a decision on this today? Ms. Fraser?
Why, why was a change put to the table, to change it to five?
I think the, the reason why it was suggested is five is to start the meeting earlier as, so that it, we wouldn't run so late in the evening, particularly now that it's getting darker earlier. So that was what, what the change was for.
Agreed, agreed. And if, most times in the meetings, there are a lot of comments that don't need to be said. And if we learn this in coherent governance, maybe our meetings will be a lot more productive than they are as well.
Okay, any other comments? Do, do we, do we want, well, if you, you could make a motion or, that you'd like to make?
We've discussed this for twenty minutes now unnecessarily. Let's make the motion, let's be productive about it.
So make the motion to start public session at five o'clock. Okay, I make a motion to start public session at five o'clock.
A second, second by Mr. Dallas. Any more discussion? Okay, I think we've discussed it enough, let's go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion here in the room, raise your hand, say aye. Aye? Okay, online, Ms. Hay? David Carr is an aye.
Ms. Hay was an aye earlier.
And Elizabeth Hayes is an aye. And opposed?
Mr. Smith opposes. I oppose this.
Okay, motion carries. All right, so let's.
So my, my question is, is executive session, so the meet, the public session starts at five o'clock. Executive session starts before the meeting, okay.
Okay, you want to go ahead?
Wait, wait, excuse me. I'm, 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 I'm not understanding that, wait a minute, is executive session, the whole, the whole, all of the conversation was around starting executive session at the end of the meeting was the, the conversation? So, so Ms. Cushingberry has a point. So now we're now going to discuss when we're going to have executive session because the, we're, if the, because the, the meeting already start from, we already changed the meeting time from four thirty from, to five thirty at times because basically as long as it is it out, the, the, the agenda time is out at either four thirty or four o'clock or five o'clock, based upon what we have going on in executive session have been the past practices. If today the, the question came about of moving executives, executive session to the end of the meeting, then why did we just take that vote right there? I mean, so, 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 so that, so, so I mean, that, that's, that's paramount.
I got it, sir, so let's make an additional motion.
No, I don't want to make an additional motion. All I said was, if we're going to change the time of the meeting, we could consider going back to the original policy of executive session. But honestly, I wasn't prepared. I just wanted to throw it out and see if people were interested. I don't think we need to discuss it anymore to Ms. Fraser's point. The question was starting the public session at five o'clock, which we can do, and then figure out executive session another time.
Are you sure? We do not necessarily have to move on. We can also say whether we want to do executive session before or after the meeting, that we are here now to discuss it, we have delved into it for twenty minutes now. So let's make it productive and make a decision on whether we're going to do executive session before or after. Please make the motion.
And just to make it clear, I, I agree with you. I'm just saying, I did not mean to wade into twenty minutes of discussion on this. Okay, so make a move to change executive session to occur at the end of the meeting.
Second, second, all right. I don't think we need any more discussion, I think we've discussed it enough. So all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye? Online, David Carr is aye. Ms. Hay?
Ms. Hay is aye.
Ms. Hay is aye, and no?
Mr. Smith is a no.
Is no. So executive session will be after the end of, at the end of the meeting. On the agenda, okay?
That's the whole, that's the whole year. We did a whole year's worth of work there, at least, Roger.
Yeah, okay, let's go on to January fourteenth board.
January fourteenth and the twenty first, the finance department has, we're moving up budget information, budget reports and budget discussion. So instead of in May where they would have the budget public forum, they have moved it up to January. So those are the two dates, January fourteenth and the twenty first.
So, so that be one be north of the broad?
One is north of the, but January fourteenth will be held at Battery Creek High School. January twenty first is at Bluffton High School. Because of a previous board motion of moving, having the meetings being equal on both sides, the months that we have work sessions, then the following months, we would move the meetings over into Hilton Head. So in January, January thirtieth, we have a work session and that's where the board would discuss their budget priorities, would be one of, one of the items. So that would start, be January thirtieth.
So we, in other words, what you're saying is that when we go to budget priorities, we will have heard from the public before, before we go into that budget priorities.
They will have, they will have the opportunity on the fourteenth and the twenty first as well as, I believe, finance will also have online surveys that would be put out as well.
Anybody got problems with that?
No, no problem, just want to share a little tidbit. The intent is to refer the budget process so that you're collecting information from the campuses, build up so that it comes from the board. It has a degree of finality, it's been vetted by the superintendent. So that, that's, that's.
Yeah, I have a question. So are, are we talking about alternating, alternating times with, are, are we talking about alternating, I was reading some, some comment, Mr. Carr put on the screen. But are we talking about alternating the places where we're having the meetings at right now? Or are we talking about alternating as in terms of where we're having, where we're having the budget, the budget forums at? Is that, was that what we're talking about?
So, right now, the fourteenth and the twenty first is the public budget forum. So on the fourteenth, that's going to be held north of the broad at Battery Creek High School and south of the broad at Bluffton High School. So those are the budget public forums, those aren't regular board meetings.
Okay, right. And because I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking because I know like the, like the last, like the last four board meetings that we've had, and I just realized that on the next board meeting, we're going back to Hilton Head. So like the last three board meetings that we've had, has, have, 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 had, had the last, the last two, excuse me, the last two board meetings we've had have been on Hilton Head. And then we come back here today for a work session. And then, and then we go back to Hilton Head for a, for the, for, for another board meeting. To me, that, 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 that.
Ms. Smith, this is not, this is not a meeting, this is a forum.
I, I, I get that, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, that I'm saying that that is what I'm looking for. Because to me, that is not, that, that, that is then lined up because, like I said, the last two meetings that we've had were at the Hilton Head, as it was, it was at Hilton Head. And then we come here for the work, for the works, for the works, work session. And then we go back to, and then we go back to, okay, go ahead.
Yes, the reason why that happens is because all of the work sessions will be held here at the district office. We're not having work sessions south of the broad. So because all of the work sessions are held here at the district office and because of a previous board vote of making the meetings being equal north of the broad and the south of the broad, we have to have some of the meetings south of the broad back to back so that they can be, because of you all's actions, they have to be equal. We're not moving any of the work sessions south of the broad. So when we have a work session on, here at the district office, the next meetings have to be south of the broad, i.e. in February because what, both meetings in February, if you see the schedule, will be held south of the broad because we have a work session here in March. So that meeting will be over on this side and not south of the broad. That was from your board, so you all would need to change if that's not how you all wanted to work.
Right, and, and, and I do have a, I do take issue with that. If that's the case, then we, I think that we can find one, one place to south of the broad to maybe have a work session because be going over there.
Doesn't work for the staff, so that's why we have all the work sessions over here. And Dr. Rodriguez, I'm sorry.
Well, then it, it seems like then, to me, it seems like then, i- 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 if we're, we're being understandable, then if the work session have to take place here, then we should understand if we're still, if we're, if we're still operating in terms of we're having one meeting on the north and one meeting on the south then. I mean, that, that, that's just, that's just the reality of it. Because, because this is the, this is the primary office here. Then, then, to me, that, that's just.
I have a suggestion, I don't know if it will be satisfactory, but I'm going to put it out there. First clarification, Colonel, January sixth, and the rest of the board, January sixth, says election of board officers. Generally, that's the meeting, right? It's, it's generally a meeting for the purpose of electing the board officers. There really isn't any other business action that typically is handled at that meeting. Yes, ma'am?
In years where it's not a election of installation of officers, that's where it's only a, that's when it's only a meeting.
When they're swearing in.
When they're swearing in.
It's just that meeting.
It is.
Otherwise, it's a business.
Otherwise, otherwise, it's a business meeting, sir.
My, my, what my recommendation was going to be was to treat the work session of January thirtieth as the first meeting, as a work session, as a work session, right? And then the February meeting, you would have one on Hilton Head and one on, on this end. And then after that, it seems like it falls back in line with one, 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 one. So the only question would be February if one, one of those dates changed. That would be the only recommendation I would make, other than that. It almost seems like it, each month, there's one and one.
Any, anybody have objection to having it that way?
I think that goes that tries to satisfy what you were talking about to some degree.
So with the January sixth meeting, will we continue to be a business session? Because your only business session would have happened December ninth. You would not have had a business session. And then the next business session for the board won't be until February third. That's why January sixth was considered a business session. So should I move it to Hilton Head for the January sixth?
I say keep it as printed. We make a pretty concerted effort to try to divide. And, and here's one circumstance where it's not practical. Keep it as printed.
Do we need a vote or, or do we have consensus? All right, let's move on. All right, go ahead there. We got February at both of them, at Hilton Head Middle School. And then, then right to Hilton Head?
Correct. Because in March, you're at Hilton Head, so you'll be at Hilton Head, three meetings in a row. You have the SIC committee meeting, and then you'll have a work session at the end of March.
So we don't know where the joint meeting is going to be yet, right?
The joint meeting, we try very hard to make it centrally located. So like the December fourth joint meeting will be held at Okati. That's one coming up. So no, we don't have a place yet for the March twelfth.
We could do it at Okati.
We have to see their schedule, what's going on at.
Okati is our most central school. And, and that would seem to be the best place to do it. Because we really want to have, we'd rather not have a north of the broad and south of the broad joint SIC. Or kind of have one in the middle, sir.
But I thought we moved it from there because that, that was not befitting, uh, uh, we moved it from Okati, if my memory serves me correctly, we used to have it at Okati, but we moved it from there.
We have it at various different places, it's whoever's schedule is available at the time for our meeting. So we've, we've had our joint SIC at Hilton Head, we've had it at Bluffton. The last joint SIC meeting that we had was at Bluffton High School.
Right, right, and, and I, my, right, right, and that's true. But prior to that, I remember we were moving it because I think that we were having, we, we started doing like, uh, in rooms, we started doing high school and middle school SICs. So that there were, there were talks about, in the, in the change of it, if my memory serves me correctly, because I remember when we were at Okati, and there was, there was a reason why we were not at Okati. So I just want to put that out there too. I know that there was a reason why we left Okati.
We did, we did not just have it at Okati. We had it at various different schools. We had it in McCracken, where we had it when we were doing breakouts in different rooms. We had, we had, we move it to keep it, tried to keep it centrally located. But we didn't have it just at Okati because that was just where we had it. We've had it at various different schools where we would have breakout sessions. We do it based off of the school's calendar and their availability. It's not that because we just moved it from Okati.
Ms. Dr. Rodriguez?
I do have a request that I see on the calendar for an adjustment, if it's possible, and you all choose to. January thirtieth work session, I would propose that you would consider moving that to January twenty third because you see February third is a board meeting right away. So staff is preparing for the thirtieth and then turning around and preparing for the third in terms of, of that, you see the, the short timeline.
Anybody have objection to making it the twenty third? Okay, twenty third, got it. All right, now we, we still got to talk about this SIC. I, I don't see a problem with having this one at Okati.
If they're available.
We, if, if, let's, let's do a coordination and see if they're available. If they're not, let's look at perhaps doing it at ACE. ACE, ACE could handle it. So let's, let's look at one of those two. I'd like to just keep the traffic, because if you have it one side of the broad, the other side of the broad, we, we have big problems. If we put it at a central location, it's just a lot easier to get more participation. All right, let's go. Twenty seventh is, that's debt, debt day, right?
The twenty fourth, April twenty fourth is debt day.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'm talking March.
On March twenty seventh is debt day.
Debt day.
Yes.
Right, okay. Any questions about that? All right, let's go to April.
Robin, can you scroll the, what's on the screen?
April, Hilton Head Middle School. Then we have another work session on the twenty fourth. Any issues? There are none. May, we have a business session here at the, at the district office, it's the fifth of May. And then certify the budget will be at Hilton Head Island on the nineteenth. Because on the twenty sixth, we have to have the first budget reading at the county council. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
I just moved to four.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Twenty-seventh of May, we have graduation, twenty-eighth, we have graduation, twenty-ninth, we have graduation. Both, all those at seven P M. June first, graduation at seven P M. June second, graduation, seven P M. June third, seventeen P M. So we're not having to do any graduation. We have two in one, in one day, which is a good thing.
The only thing to keep in mind is the potential makeup day.
Yeah.
Is, is the same day.
Third, yeah. Yeah, that would be, that could possibly be, that could possibly be a two, two a day. Okay, any, any issues with that? All right. Second public reading on the eighth of May. And, uh, I, I'd like to offer a possibility. Instead of having our regular, uh, board meeting here on the June ninth. We used to always have it at the new, at the county council, and they're gonna have a county council thing done by then. Would you, would you mind having that meeting there, just at the county council for that one meeting a year, certainly? Any problem?
And they're checking the availability of the date for us currently, so they're supposed to get back with us.
If, there's no objection, then we'll, we'll look at doing that. Then we have, we're back at the, for the third meeting on, uh, the joint meeting. Not the joint meeting, it's a, the reading at the public forum of the chamber of, or council, county council. Hilton Head Middle School Business Section on May twenty-third. July, that's our one meeting in July, will be here at the district office on the fourteenth. August fourth, middle, Hilton Head Middle School. At district office on the twenty-first. And now, now we're basically back every alternating time. Through till the first of December.
Um, Leah has a question. Leah has her hand up.
Leah, yes.
I just wanna ask, is it possible to get our badge to be able to just come inside of the Hilton Head Island Middle School? That second door?
They were set up for that.
They are set up that way, and if yours is not working, we might need to look at, because they get turned off. If, if, if you're not using it at, um, at a certain time, if you, then we need to know. So that, so that it can be turned on, because you're, all your, all your badges are set up so that you should be able to get into the school, Hilton Head Middle.
We'll have someone check on yours today.
Please, and I know I found.
Is there any other one?
Yeah. I've never worked there. I don't. No.
Sure, I, I have a question. Be, I have, I have, I have a question about that. And in, in terms of, we have a, we have a policy that for, for, uh, for board badges to only be turned on for the district office. We, we have, we have a policy. So if it's turned on, then how do they get turned on and, and, and who made that decision? Because we have a, we have a board policy, a board vote, that said that badges, badges are only to be turned on for district office. So, so I need, so, so.
I'll just.
So it was turned on because your board meeting is being held, they were turned on to where your board meeting is being held. So it was turned on for Hilton Head Middle, because that's where we have our board meetings at.
Been that way for some time.
Yeah, but that, to me, that's, that's something that should have came before, before the board, because we had a board. Can I, can I finish?
Sure.
Thank you. We had a board vote. That, it, it, same thing about, about these, about policies, and we, we, we're being governed by. So I mean, when it's convenient, the, the board voted strictly. That the only places, and that's why I've never, I've never asked, that the only places our badges are to work is the district office. And so we have board members who had badges that are working in other places. That goes against, that goes against the board policy, because we, we took a formal vote on that. And so if, if, if that's happening, then, then that mean that that's, that's out of the world of, of the board. Now, the board want to make a vote for that, that's something differently. But we took, uh, took the, the need to make a board vote. To ha, to, to have, to have that happen, to have that action, to have the action reversed. It comes, because it's, it's, it's very alarming to me, because, uh, I'm sure.
No.
Can we just take a recess, don't know if you have them receiving audio?
You're saying which one is here, so?
Did you hear us now, guys?
It looks like.
What did your show have? Did you hear us? Give us a sign. Only price if it.
And you type it in?
Well, but we need to get it ungarbled for Kenny's channel. Is Kenny's channel, can I hear that? This is just YouTube. It's his channel.
Sounds just as that. Um, I went to tech, so they're trying to figure out. But they didn't give an idea before, and she says.
Okay. Of course. Can't live with them, can't live in.
Though, right? Aye.
Aye.
Next.
And.
Pardon me, that.
Yes, okay. That's.
No, I I do that pursuit.
Okay. Oh, I mean, maybe you have a land to feel the meetings.
Do you feel lunch is ready now?
And using our show, it seems like it's important activity issue. The system here, so it's time to figure out who's.
Spark lights have trouble.
Taking up bandwidth. That's why people to learn.
As I'm saying, I think spark lights out. I had trouble with my network earlier in the week. So lunch break for lunch?
We're just getting ready.
Yeah.
Recording stopped. Thank you.
And on the agenda is a legislative committee brainstorming session led by our distinguished vice chair. Sir, you're on, you're on stage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you board members. We, the legislative committee has gone through a couple of exercises that we call ideation sessions. And as you know, with ideation sessions, there are no constraints. And we are really trying to provide an environment where people could bring up innovative ideas without those ideas being challenged, and then we collated them over two sessions. I think we got about 29 really, really good ideas. And so now we go into the culling process. And the culling is we want to give the board us the opportunity to vote digitally. And so we can prioritize which ones we should be devoting our attention and focusing energy to. Now, the first time I saw this particular software used was led by our superintendent doing the culling of the strategies. I think it was last year. And that was very efficient, very effective. And so we wanted to ensure that those 29 items that we have identified through anyone could provide any input, that we go through those and then see exactly what the will of the majority is here. So those will be ranked by your votes. For anything that's not already been included. Is that how I say? What are you talking about? Yeah. So anything that's not, not been included, we're gonna, and you'll have an opportunity to include that for our next legislative meeting, which will be occurring in early December. So we're going to continue that process capturing ideas. We want all people to feel welcome to submit those ideas. And so if this is okay, then we'll turn it over to our superintendent, who has led us through the strategy mentee session about a year ago. And he's agreed to also lead us through the legislative session.
Okay. Good afternoon. Let me share my screen here for a second. Okay. So what I did was I took the materials that you all had come up with. And out of those 29, a couple of them were very similar to another one. So I just combined those into one. And then continued through the process of reviewing it. And met with Mr. Dallas after he asked me to do that. And just sort of fine tuned it in terms of what's coming before you today. So what I'm going to ask you to do, you can do it one of two ways. You can use the QR code that's there. Or you can go to mentee.com and use the code that's up at the top. There's going to be one slide in which is interactive for you to do a ranking. The other slides are just more of a progression with the process. Thank you for all the thumbs up. Did it work for you? Do you want already? Okay, all right. Showing seven.
Did I stumble in? We're trying to get the guest Wi-Fi password here.
Got it. Do you have it? Okay, I don't know if, if you, I don't know specifically who's in. Let me see if it, it won't, no, it doesn't tell me. But I know there's seven of you in.
Yeah, just the, uh.
Yep. And I think we have two online. Okay. See, is she in? And Mr. Carr. And once you're on, you give it a second. It takes a little second to transition it.
Add it. I've lost it. God, cut it.
Now.
Do you want from?
Now. Okay.
Be careful.
Yeah, I did that. There it is.
Yep.
Okay.
You're in.
Should be.
Yep.
And then it'll just sit there for a while till I change it.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Or did you get it?
It's moving pretty slow.
A half Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
I have to be on the line.
No, no, you're off.
Just back, so maybe I'll go behind.
Okay. Mr. Carr, if you're on and you want to use your, your phone and use the QR code on the screen, that will get you into the system.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. If you'll let me know when you're, when you've connected.
I'm sending positive vibes.
Okay, so I think we've got. Perfect. All right, so we'll go to the next slide. So as Mr. Carlton mentioned, this is part of the legislative committee's work. We met in August and in September and went through, I called it a brainstorming process to identify the areas of interest to pursue regarding any legislation with the school boards association. Ultimately, as I mentioned, we combined like items. So we ended up with 22 items that were identified. I went further and looked at those items and subdivided those items into three possible categories. One, what are the things that are listed on there that are really operational items? Not things that necessarily need legislation, but they're operational items. Things that are board items, that are things for you as a board to consider what you want to do, not, not necessarily legislative items. And then landed on possible legislative items for consideration and ranking. Okay? So in terms of the operational items, most of the items, I think there were 12 out of 22 that really were operational items. And, and with, this is the list of those things that landed in operational items that are really more for, for us to look at as a system that for me and my team to, to work on. Several of these, we already do, we already have in place. It may not be in place in every school, but in, in several schools do different components of this. There's a second slide on operational items. And these are other operational items, I think, in terms of, of what I saw on that list. And I'll move on to the next slide, which is board items. These are some things that came up. I'm not sure it really requires legislation. So that's why I put it in this slide, but it's just things for you all as a board to consider. Right? Which then brings us to the six items that really are things that would probably require legislation if anything was, was going to be done. And so these are, well, I broke it up into two slides for right now. We're not ranking yet. And I also provided you with a sheet that looks like this in your materials. Because you see the length of each of those items on there? That's too lengthy for a Mentimeter. So I captured the essence of it and I highlighted it in yellow. And that, what's highlighted in yellow is what you're going to see when we get to the ranking part. Okay? And you'll use that to rank. But if you want more information, you have all of it, the, all of it there in terms of what the intent was of what came up. So the next slide is the three other legislative items for consideration and ranking. And then that takes us to the actual slide where we will, where you will begin ranking, which are the ones that you believe are the most important. So again, you can see, and I'll use it as an example, where it says curbing the negative effects of technology and screen time legislation. If you look at number one on this paper that I gave you, you see that, that's the item that we're talking about. I highlighted in yellow the, the language that matches what's on the board on, on the, on the screen so that it's easy for you to follow. But if you wanted more information, this is the information that was provided. That helps, okay? And so what you would do is you would click on, on the one that you want to put a ranking on. And you would take it, slide it up first. As you slide all of these into the, the actual ranking system, you then have the opportunity to readjust before you finalize your vote. And as you, as you rank them, I'd rank the number one, two, three, four, five, right? Six, number one being the highest, the one of the most interest. If that makes sense, number two, the next most, number three, the next most, so on and so forth.
So we just start moving them.
You start moving them. Yep. And you, you pick it and you slide it into that gray box. And, and it'll land up top. And then you can readjust them once you have them up top.
I have a question.
And it will, it will begin landing and showing you all the votes shaking out.
Yeah, I got it.
You got it?
And rankings, what? What do they mean, like from least to best in terms of their?
The one that you're ranking, the one that you want the board, who want the board to determine is, is, is what you want to focus on to send to. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Okay.
That's true.
So I get it to submit?
When you're ready. But you have to say. No, I mean say, you have to say that you go. Not you have to do that.
No.
Not really.
And then there may be a. Is there a submit button? So when you're done.
Oh, it's been thrown up here. As mine.
Yeah, as others are, you know, when they submit, it'll change.
Oh, I see, yeah. Mine, mine's already submitted.
Alright, that's what changed in the screen, so it changed.
Missing the submit button.
He's missing the submit button, it's down at the bottom.
Where at the bottom?
Are you on your cellphone or are you on a laptop?
I'm on a laptop.
Anybody else doing it on laptop?
Yeah, I've, I've been on it, but it's already done.
Yes.
Yeah, it's already gone.
That's not, that's iPad. Yeah, but I don't, the ones I'm interested are on you. And I actually disagree with a couple of these, like the negative effects of technology.
So you didn't, didn't.
I didn't, I didn't put anything.
You're a rebel.
I'm gonna, I mean, I won't be happy to explain. This makes, subsumes a lot of stuff up front, right? So state funding of early learning centers, what does that mean? What constitutes an early learning center? There's a lot of research that shows that A through three, I mean, word through three should not be in a state-sponsored school. Um, there's just a recent, you know, responsibility of the cost.
Hang on one second, Mr. Carr, I'm checking.
Stipendents for gun. Require law enforcement, retruency action.
Then you, you had, you had none that you could, you could fit, put it on this number one priority?
Yeah. Curbing the negative effects of technology and screen times. I don't know what that, none, I don't understand what any of these things mean. So, and I'm happy to put this, to say what.
Give it a shot. Give it a shot.
I mean.
Mr. Carr, um, when I see it on a laptop here, uh, you would click on it, you drag it up to the top, uh, and then, uh, at the very bottom in blue with white letters, there's this thing that, there should be a button that says submit.
Not on mine. Uh, maybe it'll pop up if I, if I arrange them, maybe it'll.
Yeah, try that. Yes, I think you do.
You pick the, you, you get that first one up there and then you just hit the next one, next one, next one, next one, and it goes that way. You don't have to move, you don't have to move. Next one.
Yeah.
Well, all seven of them need to be arranged before you can submit?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think.
I play drums, what do you want?
Okay, I clicked on all of them, but there's no submit button, so I'm assuming maybe, maybe my count has already gone in, I don't know.
Do you see the, uh, thumbs up button at the bottom?
Yep.
I, I have a question though.
Above that, do you see a reset button?
Nope. All I have is. Go ahead, Ms. Burrow.
No, no, I, I thought you were done. I thought you were just fooling with it. I, I just, my concern with doing it this way is I don't have any option to not rank these things. I can't submit to the next section unless I put something in there. And I, I don't, I don't understand enough about these things to say I would want the legislature to focus on it. I don't want the legislature for me to say that I want them to focus on the responsibility of the cost of juvenile detention because I don't know what that legislation would look like.
One of the, one of the things that, uh, I think is part of this. Currently, when law enforcement takes a student to juvenile detention, the law enforcement agency is paying the cost of transporting that student, that, that, that individual. They're paying the cost of, I think it's like seventy-five dollars a day for that person to be there. And then they're paying the cost of going back to pick them up when they're released and bringing them back. Alright? And so, so, um, are some not being transported, uh, because of those costs?
And so this, as I saw in some of the documentation, says parents would bear the responsibility of transporting the costs?
I, I think that's.
Is that legislation that's actually up?
No, there's no legislation that's.
My thing is, I mean, what, what would that even look like as far, so that's just why I'm concerned. I just want, don't wanna get into it. So I'm happy to go to the next screen, but I don't.
There's no other screen. This is where, and for you all to have a conversation. Yep. Did you submit first?
Yeah.
Yep, submitted. He didn't submit. 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 Two, three, four, five, six. Is Ms. Hay, uh?
I'm, I've got it.
On as well? You got it? Excellent.
If you can hear me, I already submitted mine.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you. Alright, so that's everybody who was gonna participate.
On change subjector.
Yes. Which is totally allowed.
Totally within.
That's it. So the way you would look at this is that in terms of these items that came before you and only these items that came before you, that, that, uh, this is what you've ranked in terms of what is most important to you for them to focus on. Some, uh, nega- the negative impacts of social media was number one, curbing the negative effects of technology and screen time. Two, state funding of early learning centers is three. Uh, and in that order, one, two, three, and then four, five, six. Um, so I think that's the task I was given. I'm gonna return the floor, uh, to you all. And if you, I would recommend that you have some discussion around this. And I would recommend, um, it sounds like there may be some items that, uh, without an other button on here, uh, can't be accounted for. So it's opportunity to, to lay your thoughts out there.
Yeah, so let me, let me lay the, the intent out.
People comment in.
They had already told me that once before, I need to pay better attention. Sit up straight. So the intent was to have a tremendous amount of discipline about providing anybody to bring any idea through those two sessions and those ideas will be included. We've done that. The second thing was to go through as, as, um, a digital process as, with as much discipline as we can so that we're ranking them and it's not so much a back and forth. It's just saying, from what you understand and interpret, here are the, here's the ranking of those that basically clearly might warrant legislative action. For anything that has come in after the September meeting, uh, we're going to have another legislative meeting. I think it's the first week in December third at eleven thirty. So anything that is still in your heart, in your mind, just bring that forward. But we wanted to begin prospecting those that are the highest leading ones right here. So it's very analytical and is, we tried to keep it as much in terms of what your thoughts are initially. So this is what we tried to basically exit with. And for those that went through the strategy session almost a year ago, this is how we were able to narrow the strategies down so quickly. So don't think you left out any of your ideas. We still are collecting those, but we wanted to have a starting point so we could begin actioning and sort of prospecting these. Yes, sir.
Um, first of all, uh, the meetings that are at one thirty are prohibitive to some of us. I teach, uh, every day during the week. Uh, so, um, sorry, I didn't mean to set off your Siri there. Uh, uh, but, uh, I, the finance, legislative, academics all meet during the day. And I, I, I can't attend those. I can't even zoom in because I'm, I'm teaching at that time. So, uh, if, if we could have meetings where everybody is in, included or could be included, that's great. But, um, there are some of us at work that, that is prohibitive. Um, second of all is, are these, are these topics, topics that are already in legislation that we are trying to decide if we want to support or, uh, uh, oppose? Or are we trying to propose things? Are these topics that we want to propose?
Both. Both.
Both. So we haven't scrubbed these to say all the, if you recall the booklet that we gave out like a year.
I recall.
Nine months. There were over fourteen hundred bills that had been already proffered. Those bills that didn't pass are held in abeyance until January. They'll be active again potentially if there's support. But what we wanted to do at the December sixth and seventh School Board, um, advocacy is this legislative committee has already passed one through committee, through our board, and it was all unanimous, unanimously supported by the School Board Association. So that will be given for the School Board Association to vote. If they vote positively, then that become, that joins all the other fifty or so items that the School Board Association is supporting. So what we're trying to do is to give our entire body here an opportunity to, without any constraint, say, here are the ones that we're thinking about. So there may be some that might be in captured or discussed in some small bit of legislation, but we haven't scrubbed that. We'll find that out as we move these forward and start asking people, here are the six topics and are, is there any existing legislation? So that's the first one, if it's, if that. Uh, anything that's new, we start from scratch, like we did the fairness in testing, which, like I said, receive unanimous support going forward for the School Board Association. There may be others, but what we're trying to do is make sure we have at least some that are going to be available for voting on December sixth and seventh. Thanks for your question. Any others? Sure.
I think the shortcoming for me on the Mentimeter, I understand the idea. But when you look at like negative impacts of social media, that's not so much proposed legislation. We say have the legislature focus on it in what way? Like that, to me, I, I mean, maybe I'm too caught up in the details and not, uh, pay enough attention. Do I think social media's had a negative impact? I do. Um, but what would be the proposed legislation that would come out from that? Because I am, as a card-carrying member of FIRE, which is the Foundation for Individual Rights and Expression in Education, um, opposed to government intervention and censorship of social media. So I would be, that's why I'm hesitant to put that in there because I don't know what exactly I'm ranking. So if we're gonna propose legislation that says, uh, we want the legis, the South Carolina Legislature to take up censorship, I know there's a lot of lawsuits out there that are trying to sue, um, and they're trying to get school boards and school districts involved. Um, but it would be very important to me to see what kind of legislation's getting proposed. So it's hard for me to say, I think we should concentrate on that because I don't know what that means. So it's not a criticism of these items. I just, when I started looking at it, I just had this question of what exactly am I saying? As from a legislative standpoint, I do think that negative impacts of social media are an issue for school-aged kids, certainly. And I think that the district's done a good job in terms of, um, removing phones. I'm a big fan of that. Um, but I don't, I, I would have to know, basically I'd have to know a little bit more before I could rank some of these things. That was just sort of my feedback on it for next time, maybe.
Yeah, and we certainly can take a look at that next time. Uh, the intent is, once you start legislation, you really know, don't know where it's ultimately gonna end up. A lot of people are gonna be involved in it. It becomes the political will and strength of those for versus those against. But the intent here is just to say this is an issue. Uh, social media, uh, cannot be regulated unless there's revocation of the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, section two, three, zero, which indemnified social media against slander and libel. So pro, newspapers, if you print something or say something that's not true, I can sue you. I cannot do that in social media. The, um, EU has taken a different approach. EU has passed the Global Data Protection Regulations, which affects all the countries that are in the EU. And that's where you see Google and Meta losing billion-dollar lawsuits because they have proven in a EU Court of Law that there's damage. That's not what we're doing here. We want to have this elevated as a topic for research by our legislatures, legislators if possible. So we can come together with a point of view. And then, of course, that would have to be proved, approved by our legislative committee, our board going forward. But this is to do more research and instead of us just taking a wild throw at it, to actually say, this is where the highest ranking was, and then go sequentially over to six, if that helps. Any others? Okay, um, when Dr. Rodriguez returns, we will go ahead. And there are two other buckets we want you to help us prioritize as well. Dr. Rodriguez, so no further questions on this one. We've explained, there's still a lot of work to be done on this. This is just the embryonic stages and we'll move it forward and keep it before the legislative committee. Alright, now we can go to the other buckets, if that's okay? Oh.
Okay.
That's the legislative one. The other one, fellas, the operational, uh, matters and the other, and then the other bucket was, uh, just things for the board to consider, which we already went through.
Okay, okay, alright. So with that then, we're going to tee up in the legislative committee. How do we begin to move these six forward with, uh, appropriate amounts of work based on where the ranking is? Anything else? Please, 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 you can feel free to submit. We are trying to be very diligent about not poo-pooing anything that's submitted by anyone. We just wanna do some research and, and see how to take it forward, if everyone's okay with that. Good? Alright, so please feel free to forward, uh, the December third, eleven thirty. Any ideas? Uh, so we reopen it and we'll start working because we got a whole year to work on that going forward. And if there are no further questions about the legislative, um, morning, finish. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Alright. Uh, now it's time for Ms. Crosby to shine. Eliminary budget discussion.
While we're waiting for that, Mr. Chair, can I respond to something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Nae, um, for the, for the Finance and Legislative Committee, we understand it's problematical for some people that are working. Uh, and, and we're not trying to keep those people from participating. We asked the members of those two committees what were times at work for them and staff. And so the midday times came out best, uh, so we, that's what we tried to accommodate. But anytime we're gonna, you know, chair of, uh, committee, we're gonna ask the committee members first and then hopefully we can arrange it if they have latitude so that anyone who wants to participate can come, alright? But thanks. That's true too. So there's always that balancing, so we, we do the best we can though. Thank you for raising it.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Crosby.
Introduce this topic?
Yeah, it was easy introduction. Uh, there's been just a tremendous, um, polite, really effective, um, modification in the sequencing of the budget process. And it is more, uh, consistent with capturing widespread, widely dispersed. Okay. Widespread, widely dispersed points of view and then roll them up so that when it get to the board, there's been a lot of vetting through the superintendent and his, uh, team, citizens, et cetera. And hopefully we can reduce the recycle time. Um, so that's, that's what, and she and her team have just done a wonderful job of getting this out and started. So thank you. All yours, Madam CFO.
I'm speaking, um, Ms. Kay, Kay Abar. Uh, I'm gonna give her all of the credit for, uh, the work that we're doing. Uh, I'm going to give her all of the credit for, uh, the work that we're doing and rearranging, uh, really the community feedback that we are doing, uh, staff feedback and community feedback. Um, so our director of finance, uh, director, excuse me, our director of budgeting is Katie Abar. And she may came up with some very good suggestions. She's been with the district for several years, uh, and has been in the budget department as an analyst and, uh, had some really fresh ideas this year, um, which we are taking advantage of, which will, uh, make things much smoother. So the feedback approach that we're taking is that we're really flip flopping, uh, the timelines. Uh, but typically we do the community forums in the first week of May. But we bring the budget to the board on April twenty-second or something like that. So it's really important for us to do that much earlier. And it, uh, offers us the flexibility to focus more on compiling the information, analyzing to make sure that all of the information is accurate and complete in the budget. And then preparing for, uh, more, um, for board certification, board meetings, and then county council presentations as well. So this year we are beginning, we actually have already begun the budget. Um, so there was also, um, we had some feedback from principals that they wanted to be more involved in the budget process as well and earlier on and, and throughout, throughout the budget process. So we took an, an opportunity, uh, working with our, uh, senior leadership teams. We were able to have some needs, a needs assessment created. And that began in October. So we began our budget for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year in October of twenty-five. Um, so, uh, that's pretty historic for us. And, um, so what we've done is worked with our principals just after they received their results from the state. Uh, and to be able to sit down and really think about and work with their staff uh, to develop what the needs were for their schools. What are the problem areas and what things could be used to, as a result of, to improve those areas? So not only did they have discussions in October, but then they had some homework to do uh, until the next meeting in November and then brought that data back. Uh, so what was really, uh, new for us this year is that our, uh, our team took that data from thirty-two schools, uh, separated it into elementary, middle, K eight and high schools, and then put them all into AI and summarized them. And, uh, so, and then we took, they forwarded that to us in the budget office, our, our, our instructional teams. And we summarized it again into budget priorities. And so it was a pretty neat, uh, and very fast endeavor. Um, within the same day that we received the items, we had budget priorities. Um, so, or the, uh, needs assessments. So it was very, very, um, thorough work, but we were able to compile it very, very quickly with use of AI. So, um, so, uh, and so November through, actually October through January, we're going to be doing needs assessments in public forums. So the next thing that we're going to be doing is to, uh, have community engagement with parents, students and stakeholders. We've already put an online survey out that we have done in the past. We've done it earlier this year. Uh, it's usually not done until February or March. And we've done that, uh, this past week. Our communications team worked with us, uh, to put some questions out there, which will also be communicated to principals to encourage parents through, uh, our, our communication channels from principals and, uh, schools to parents, that they'll be able to, uh, uh, provide some feedback on those surveys right away as well. And while that's all going on, uh, we plan to go to three different, uh, public forums this year. Uh, the joint board and school improvement council meeting that's in December. We intend to attend and would like an agenda item on the budget to get some feedback from that group. I believe it's one, it's probably held in the Okati area. And then on January fourteenth, we're scheduled for Battery Creek High School. Um, we've been at Beaufort High for a couple of years now, so we're going to switch over to, uh, Battery Creek this year. And then we're going to remain centrally located, uh, at Lufton High School as well on January twenty-first. Uh, and then on January thirtieth, we're going to have a board work session. You'll, you'll have a board work session. And we'd like to have a discussion of budget priorities. We'll bring some information back that we've gathered from all of those groups, narrow it down to a, a list and have an exercise where the board can have discussion and perhaps some rankings of budget items that have already been developed by the community, the parents, the teachers, the staff, the principals, all of those groups. And I think that'll be very valuable. Um, so, and then we will, in February through April, we'll be, the staff will be compiling the budget. We'll have budget discussions, two or three, there'll be at least three board meetings for the budget to be discussed with a certification scheduled for May nineteenth as usual. And so the rest of the schedule is really on target with the previous years. Uh, we just won't have those public forums late in the year. And then we, of course, we go to county council for three readings with the final one being June twenty-second. And finally, the early folk, early focus areas that were identified, uh, were particularly in mathematics, multilingual learners, special education supports and attendance were some. But we have a ways to go, so we'll have other priorities as well and categories for those initiatives. So, um, I just wanted to provide you an update and offer any chances for comments or discussion.
Any discussion, comments, questions? I hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at the chair's report. I've got a couple of things I need to inform you about, and I got a comment, uh, at the end. Uh, last Monday, uh, Alice Howard, County Council, and myself were invited to come to Port Royal, uh, city hall for a briefing with the mayor, one of the council members and members of, uh, Safe Harbor. Uh, that's a, that's the company that bought the land that was owned by the state. Well, I have to go back even farther. That's what the discussion was. And the discussion was, was our current TIF that we have with them. And if you might not know this, but we have engaged, uh, thirteen years ago with the city of Port Royal to provide funding through a tax increment financing scheme. It's an authorized way for entities to raise money, uh, for primarily to provide infrastructure like sidewalks, roads, streetlights, stormwater, that type of thing. And the way, the way it works is you take the additional revenue that development of a property would achieve when you start to sell it and use it or in a developmental way. In other words, you got a piece of property that you're not getting any tax revenue from. And some way, and I'll describe what the way is, some way now this property has value and tax revenue that derives from that value. Okay, so let's talk about the specifics in Port Royal. The port of Port Royal runs all the way around this, the Battery Creek from, basically from, uh, Paris Island gateway all the way around to the Sands Beach. And it's, there, there was a big dock, big cement, uh, dock out in front that they tore down. And it was owned by the state. The state owned a property. So it was providing no revenue to the county, the city or to the school district. It had been abandoned for years and the state finally got a deal to sell it to a consortium at Port Royal. And that was, that, that was, uh, fourteen years ago. The city came back and said, you know, now, now that they own that, it's a private company. Uh, it was a consortium of, of, uh, developers that bought it. Now that you got that, now we can, we can tax that. We, the city can tax it, the county can tax it, the school district can tax it. So what Port Royal came to us and said, okay, look, we're going to gain X number of dollars in tax revenue and we can proportion that tax revenue and give the school district their, their part. But we would rather have a TIF and take that extra revenue that that you would get and put it into, uh, a bond that you would sell to a, a bank for a large amount of money that would allow you to go in and put in roads, lights, stormwater retention and so on, which increases even more the value of that property. Because right now there wasn't any of that access. And so fourteen, yeah, thirteen years ago, this school district signed up for it. And it's a very long thing and I'm not going to go into the, the details because I want that to go to the finance committee and the finance committee can get, get into the details of how much and when. But fundamentally, it's, it's, it can be no more than three hundred thousand dollars a year. Can they siphon off revenue that we wouldn't otherwise get? So, so what they called us in to show us is, listen, we now have a different developer who has purchased the property. And when they purchased it, it was for even a higher price, even though nothing had been done, just because of inflation and everything. And instead of a local, uh, consortium, uh, Butler Chrysler, Butler Marine, that was one of the big guys that, uh, that was behind it. This is now by Safe Harbor. Safe Harbor is a nationwide, uh, port. They, they develop marinas all over the nation. Big time, big capital. And they've been bought out by an even bigger equity firm. So they've got deep pockets and you would think that they would start working on putting in this, the infrastructures to support this. But the city was not able to get Safe Harbor to agree with their vision of what this development around the port should look like. And so they've been in negotiations, they've been, it's been very bad. But now they have finally figured out how to start the project and they want to sell the bonds. Problem is when we sold, when we put in the TIF, uh, thirteen years ago, the TIF was for twenty years. And they never borrowed the money and started construction because they didn't know what they could do with the developer. So about, was it three or four years ago, our financial advisor told us, hey, listen, they've been taking, siphoning off this money. They didn't get a bond. They weren't making any payments, an interest and principal on that bond. We need that bond, that money back. And so we got how many? A million dollars, a million dollars came back to us. And so we gratefully took the million dollars and we used it, uh, in our, as revenue, uh, when it came in. But now they want to bond it. They want to go out and borrow the money. Well, they can't borrow the money for seven years and make it work. And that's how much longer the TIF would go. Because it's only, only lasts for twenty years and they didn't do anything about it for thirteen. So they brought Alice and I in and they showed us the drawings and everything that was going to be done. And they're going to put roads and streetlights and, and a city park along the waterfront. And they're ready to go. They're ready to start. They, they have a concept that the, that the city agrees with and Safe Harbor agrees with it. Now they need to get exactly what it's going to cost. Because obviously what's going, what would have cost thirteen years ago and what it costs now is different. So they have come to us and the county, because the county is also in this and, uh, providing part of the funding. They're, they're coming into us and saying, would you consider either a new TIF for twenty years or an extension on the existing TIF for an additional so many years? So I said, I'll, I don't know. I, I, I need the details. I've got the details. I want to give it to the finance committee to look at it and see what you all think about either letting it just run out. Because we're committed, we're committed for seven more years, one way or the other. But they won't generate enough to probably do much. They might have to figure out a different way of financing it if, if we don't extend it. So there's a lot of things to consider. I just wanted to let the board know that that's going on right now. And, but Alice Howard came to me and said, maybe we should have a joint county council, school board meeting once we get the total, uh, cost and what we would be, uh, responsible for in January, February to discuss this. And I said, I would bring that back to the board and see what the interest is. Um, so I, I guess I'd leave a little feedback on just generally what you think about either extending it, canceling it, or just walking away from it. That's basically what, uh, what we could do. So any, any ideas?
As chair of the finance committee, I like to allow my other colleagues speak first, but I do have some ideas about it. So I'll defer to the other comments at this point in time.
Go ahead.
So two things. One, it seems like we have three options. Cancel, extend. I forgot the third one is cancel, extend or?
Or, or just leave.
Or let it run out.
Just let it run out.
I would like to know from our finance team, whether that's the committee or Tanya's team, what the impact would be given those three options. So that's number one. Number two, philosophically, I'm beginning to really oppose these sorts of arrangements. And the reason is maybe thirteen years ago, things were different. There are, you know, we look at like Sand Shark Arena. There is this, if we don't, the things we need to invest in to attract businesses here and to improve the quality of, uh, life for our residents is lower the cost of living, schools and healthcare. And if we're funneling money out of the schools to do that and to put in parks and other amenities, right now I talked to a medical recruiter who said, you know, it's very hard to get healthcare professionals to come to Beaufort County because of the cost of living, number one. Making sure, you know, the schools are in good shape. They want, you know, in good shape schools, but they are having a really hard time. We have a seventy percent roughly of Beaufort County's population is Medicare, thirty percent non-Medicare. That is not a good payer mix for any kind of healthcare person. So we need to, in other words, what I guess I'm driving at, some of these developments, I think, will benefit people that have retired here, that enjoy the lifestyle, but they're not as good for people who live and work here. And I think some of these, so fundamentally on a philosophical level, I think the school district needs to get away from getting involved where tax money is diverted from the schools. That doesn't mean I'm against this project. I want to know the answers to those, each of those three ones. But we just, it seems like we're hearing more and more about these sorts of things as a tool for investment. And if you don't invest in the schools, it just, you know, reverberates down. So that's kind of my comment.
Okay, and any other comments for?
Okay, um, I'm almost perfectly aligned with, um, my colleague, Ms. Boatwright. Um, what I see, I go back to raison d'etre for creating public schools. It is not for us to build sidewalks unless it's in front of our school. It is not for us to build recreation centers unless it's something that is connected to our athletic programs. It is really to educate the students that go through our schools. And if you look at what the state is holding us tightly accountable for, it is math scores, ELA scores, and then compliance with all the legislative things that come out. Private investors, I'm a private investor. If you're a private investor, you know how to raise money and spend it where it's best, most likely return for you. If you're a private investor, you know how to raise money and spend it where it's best, most likely return for you. But there's become this idea that everybody wants, they want to demonize the government, then they want to go to the governments that bail me out. And with all the pressure that's on the public school districts, I cannot see us diverting money towards this type of program. I would let it expire. Now, in terms of an analysis, we got to go through all the options that have been noted so far, right? And there's always a do nothing option, so that would be a fourth option. But we have to look at the impact it will have on our cash flow, our ability to actually pay for what we're going to need to invest in our schools to help raise our performance. So I know that is, is something that a lot of private investors are coming and saying, oh, the school district has 370-some million dollars operating budget and 439 capital over five years. They got money. I've had elected officials approach us and use those almost exact same words. But we have some tremendous responsibilities because when the US public education after World War I was number one in the world, we're in the twenties now. And people going to school in countries that don't even have buildings are, are performing us. So I, I want to focus on that, would be my, my suggestion. However, having said that, we will definitely review it with cold analytical impartiality to the extent possible, and we'll come back with a recommendation.
There's the background. As representative for that district, I will tell you why it may be in our interest. Maybe. First of all, these businesses and things that they're proposing are going to be businesses that are going to bring us in more 6% revenue. So by investing in this, we are investing in future revenue. Secondly, that is phase one that we're looking at right now. They're not looking at us providing any support right now for phase two. And phase two is housing. Now, one of the big problems they had in trying to get it solved is that Safe Harbor turned the housing part of that property, and it's a significant amount of, of property for housing that's right along the water up to, to the town of Port Royal itself. The original idea was to put rental properties in there. And the town said, absolutely not. They do not want rental properties. Then they said, well, we'll have this great waterfront. We'll have some million-dollar homes, gated kind of facility. Kansas City said, absolutely not. We don't want that. What we want is affordable workforce housing there in that area. So the, the price point for the houses that they required in there are in the 300, $400,000 range, no more than that, and townhomes as well. And that would generate students. And Port Royal Elementary right now has a lot of capacity. And when we're looking at growth in the area in northern Beaufort County, it's nice to have growth where kids can walk to school rather than out in the middle of nowhere and have to be bused to school. So that's, that's what I'm going to hear from them, and I'm just, and I'll leave it at that. Because we have to talk dollars and cents. And, and that's got to take priority for us.
Yes.
And I've given you all the, the background data there so that we can bring that in.
Thank you, Karen.
If there's no other, I'll go on to the next one. On our next meeting in December 9th, we're going to be evaluating five books, is it, Dr. Rodriguez? Five books. And we'll be doing it the same way we did it the last time. I hope, Ms. Cushionberry, we can get from ISD the score sheets from those five books. And so we have a packet, and we can get it out to the board members well before the meeting, so you have a chance to take a look at that. We're also going to contact Ms. Sully. I think we just did to have her be there. The way we'll do it, like we did last time, is she will come up as the aggrieved party, so to speak, and say why she thinks the book should not be in the library. A person from the committee who said the life, that the book should be retained should go there, be, have the opportunity to go and speak why they think that. And Ms. Sully could have somebody else from the community that thinks that book should go. But do that for all five books, and then we'll have a vote after we hear. And there's one of three things that can happen. The book stays in the library, the book's removed in the library, or the book's restricted in the library. That was the three ways we did it. That's what the state wants us to do. And they seem to like the way we did it before, and we're going to do it the same way again. So just be prepared. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Also, I, I tried to contact Ms. Gordon, and she's in the hospital. I'm going to try to go by and see her there this afternoon. Dr. Carr mentioned to me if it would be possible to have an additional couple of members to serve on that academic committee. He'd like to go from three members to five members, voting members. Is there anybody that's willing to serve on that committee as well? These two? Is that fine? We won't, we won't have any, so, so, so it'll be after the first of the year then? Okay, so then we'll, we'll take care of it. We'll take care of it then. Okay, thank you. I just told him that I would, I would bring it up. All right. Last thing, we had a public comment, and I don't normally respond to public comments. I didn't know this public comment was coming because I had planned to talk about this anyway at the end. And this is the hot mic incident of the last board meeting. As I was driving home, I got a call from Dr. Rodriguez and said, told me what happened. And what happened was that the meeting was adjourned. And the video went off, but the sound did not. And when I thought about it, I said, oh, I don't understand. He said, well, he said that the mic picked up me saying that I'm going to put this in a body cavity rather than, I was in the, on the way to the garbage can. I, I left the desk where I was at and moved toward Ms. Cushionberry where she was at. I had a piece of paper that I crumpled up. And, and in aside, not in a loud voice, I'd like to take this, I threw it, as I threw it into the garbage can, I said what I said. And I received emails from people saying that I disrespected a board member. I did not disrespect a board member. I did not name anybody when I said that. I just said, this, I'm going to, I'd like to put this up a body cavity. And what it was, was a piece of paper like this, crumpled up, thrown in there. But there's no video because the video wasn't shown. So I, I received a call from a reporter from the Charleston newspaper wanting me to talk about it. And I said, told him, I said, I just told him what I just told you. And they said, well, it was, who was it referring to? I said, well, I'm not going to say who it's going to, was referring to, but I will say that it was not a member of this board. It was not directed to a member. It was directed to a garbage can. It was after the meeting was over. I was not on record, so to speak. It was not done in a loud voice. And the reporter said, well, who was it? Who was it that you said, that you were referring to? I said, well, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have to say that. I'm not going to say that. But I will tell you who it wasn't. It wasn't a member of this board. And I, I got an email from a person saying that I was referring to a gavel that supposedly was where the, would go into the body cavity. That's absolutely not true. And had there been video, it would have shown that. So if I've said something to somebody, I would apologize. I sent it to the garbage can in passing. I'm sorry, I'm an old soldier, and I mumble, I mumble to myself as I go by. But I meant no disrespect. And if I disrespected anybody, I would apologize, but I didn't do this toward any member of this board, period. So I wanted to clear the air, let's tell you my side of it, and take it for what it's worth. Now, that's the last agenda item. Do, without any objections, we will adjourn under unanimous consent. We don't have it on the agenda.
Email. Do you see the whole board?
Yeah, if you just send it, send it to us. We can do that. Anything else? Any other objection? All right, then. We're adjourned. Thank you.